Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on November 16, 2022, and this regular meeting in the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding, also President, Councilors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groot, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. If everyone will please stand for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, his republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with all its just.
We have a few announcements this week. First, I would like to thank the voters, everyone who voted last November 8th, last Tuesday. It was a, I think, one thing that I'm very pleased about the election is Sandpoint voters approved the local option tax and increase of the tourist tax from 7% to 14%. And of course, we will use that funding to support street and sidewalk improvements throughout the city. So, thank you voters for passing that initiative. I think that's will be very exciting for our future. Another thing that I would like to bring attention to is the tragic events in Moscow, Idaho, the four university students that were killed on Sunday. And so, I would like to invite the council and all of you to please join me in a moment of silence for 30 seconds in recognition of their suffering, both those who've been killed, as well as their families and friends. Thank you, everyone, for that grace. Next, I would like to read a proclamation. So, November 13 through November 19 is National Nurse Practitioner Week. So, I would like to take this moment to recognize nurse practitioners in our community. Whereas nurse practitioners play a critical role as healthcare providers in our state, and whereas nurse practitioners work to expand healthcare access in underserved communities, promote health equity and care, and whereas patients depend on more than 355,000 licensed NPs or nurse practitioners in the United States and 1,900 NPs in Idaho to diagnose, manage, and treat their chronic and acute healthcare conditions. And whereas NPs provide high-quality primary, acute, and specialty healthcare services while emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day. And whereas the confidence that patients have in nurse practitioner delivered healthcare is evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually to NPs across the country. And whereas more than five decades of research demonstrate the high quality of care provided by NPs. And whereas better utilization of NPs through modernized state laws and improved policies creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system. And whereas more than half the nation, including 26 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and Northern Mariana Island have adopted full-practice authority legislation, offering patients full and direct access to the outstanding care provided by NPs. And whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors Association, and the Federal Trade Commission have taken notice of the benefits of providing patients full and direct access to MP-delivered care. And whereas NPs serve as the primary care provider of choice for many Idaho residents and play a pivotal role in the health and welfare of our communities. And whereas the city of Sandpoint in Bonner County, Idaho, is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners to our state. Be it resolved, therefore, I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, hereby declare November 13 through 19, 2022, as National Nurse Practitioner Week in Sandpoint, recognizing, in recognition of the countless contribution nurse practitioners have made over the past century and will continue to make on behalf of the health and well-being of citizens in our state. Cynthia Dollsing, if you would like to come forward to the podium?
There you go. It's because they turn it right.
Keep it classy, Tab.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
I would, I'm Cynthia Dollsing. I'm the representative for the five.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. The five northern counties for the nurse practitioners of Idaho, which is the state organization that advocates and helps to educate nurse practitioners in Idaho. One of the exciting things really is that Idaho is the first state to practice, to license nurse practitioners. And this year, we're celebrating 50 years of nurse practitioner licensure in the state. So, we had a big gala in the fall and celebrated 50 years of practice. And we even had some of the very first women who were licensed there. They're, they're in their 90s, but it looked like a fun table. So, I just appreciate that all the work. There are probably over 35 nurse practitioners who really are working to provide healthcare in Sandpoint in various areas, with half being primary care, but the other half being in specialty clinics. And frequently, we kind of get lost in the medical provider group, but we are in the trenches and appreciate that we get to take care of this community and continue to work on making sure that everybody has access to care, especially in rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
We will now, oh, let's see. We've got some announcements from, do we have any announcements from council? No? Okay.
Yes. There will be, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of there's going to be a lot of things going on in the downtown shopping district area for upcoming holidays. So, pay attention to the community calendars like Sandpoint Online. And if you go to the Sandpoint Shopping District's Facebook page, you can find out all the things that we're doing. The Christmas tree lighting for kids and Santa coming to town is Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and it's free and it's cookies and hot chocolate. And the kids get to see Santa, and that starts at 6 o'clock. Our fire department will bring Santa in on one of the engines and he'll talk to all the kiddies. So, just so you're aware of that.
Thank you, Madam President. Staff, any announcements?
We are in process of issuing final permitting for Christmas tree lighting over at Jeff Jones Square. And our parks crew has been working hard at getting the lights up on the trees downtown. For those who've been downtown, over the last week, you have probably seen them with their poles getting the lights up. Austin and crew, it's one of the things they really take a lot of pride in. So, lights will be lit up Tuesday of next week. So, and then they stay up through President's Day weekend is our cutoff for the lights downtown. So, support the businesses downtown, enjoy the holiday season downtown, and thank you to our parks crew for once again keeping our downtown like a park.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. And I will remind the members of the public that we continually have positions coming up on our various commissions and volunteer, volunteer commissions here at the city. I know we've got some positions coming up on urban renewal, Planning and Zoning Commission, Trees, and Arts and Historic Preservation Commission. So, all of those can be found, all the applications to apply to join a committee can be found on our website. And I would encourage any of you at any time to go there, see what's coming up, and submit an application. You could always submit an application even when there isn't a position coming up, because, you know, we have positions coming open, you know, on a, at least on a yearly basis. So, at that time, we'll review all the applications that we have and, and potentially interview you. So, thank you for your interest in supporting what we do here at the city. And we will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address myself and the council on items that are not listed on the agenda or on any item that's on the consent calendar. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting now. And if you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we'll provide an opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form that's located by the front door at the table up there and hand it to the clerk here up front to your right. Those, and if you're on Zoom and wish to speak, you'll need a, you'll need a working microphone, of course. When I ask for public comment, you will raise your hand at that time, and the clerk will unmute you. For everyone participating, comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to council or to staff, and please do not approach the dials. Please note that during the public forum, council may not hear or take testimony on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during the public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public, public forum portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum as well. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak during the public forum this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That concludes the public forum. We'll now proceed with the.
Did you guys have something to say?
Mr. Mayor.
We will not be taking public testimony on that item this evening. That's an update only. It's not an action item. No, we won't, we won't be hearing any comment on that. There's no decision being made on that tonight. It's just an update. Okay. If you're wanting to comment on the James E. Russell building, we will not be taking comment on that this evening. Okay. Yeah, please come to the podium. And if you didn't have a chance to fill out a form, please do that afterwards. You can hand any handout items to the clerk up here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for clarifying.
My name is Kate Manser. I'm with the Center, and we provide meals, movement, and mentorship to Sandpoint teens. Normally, we provide this every day after school. Last year, we had over 500 different teens attend our Sandpoint Teen Center, and they came over 6,000 different visits. You'll find in the handout that I made, just a brochure of the teen center, pictures of activities. Board member Darryl Markusen and staff Ariel Markusen will also give a quick update on just their perspective. They work directly with the teens. But the reason what we're here today is because the Sandpoint Teen Center currently doesn't have a home. The Seven B Lanes didn't renew our contract because they wanted to open earlier each weekday, whereas in the past, they used to wait until 5:00 PM to start their hours, which includes serving alcohol, and that doesn't work during teen center hours. And so, part of what we've put together is just our wish list for a future home for the Sandpoint Teen Center. And one of our ideas is to potentially partner with the future James E. Russell sports facility. But our needs are a facility that's available every day, Monday through Friday. It's from 2:30 to 5:00 and 1:00 to 5:00 on Wednesdays. And because of our limited hours, that's why we're ideally hoping to partner with another organization, whether it's the city of Sandpoint or the Lake Pondray School District. We need an entryway where our teens sign in and out, a community room, and we serve healthy snacks and hot meals. So, ideally, there would be a kitchen. We use a social room where we play board games, a game room. Again, these, these could be, it could be just one room that was used for several different things. And then the biggest part of the teen center this past year was a moving and activity room. So, at Seven B Lanes, we renovated a space that kids could play dodgeball and Nerf tag and all kinds of moving recreational activities. So, that could be one court set aside for one to two hours each afternoon in that future James E. Russell facility. And what we can provide, we have adults, both staff and volunteer, to monitor all the spaces. We have a no-nonsense rules of respect for both people and the facilities. So, our teens will respect the space in order to be a part of the program. And we feel that we would be helping James Russell's dream to engage youth and adults in sports and recreation by bringing thousands of teens into that facility.
Thank you, Ms. Manser. Really appreciate that presentation and request. Yes, if, if you want to address the teen center, that's totally acceptable. Please come forward.
Well, my name's Darryl Markusen. I'm a current sitting board member on the Sandpoint Youth Center. It's my honor and privilege to participate in discussions today with you all. Within current business, I'd like to address the workings regard regarding the proposal at Travelers Park Complex. It is in works. I would like to offer a vision which can provide interactive participation, quality of care, and well-being in our lives. Addressing the vision and mission of this facility, I've been thinking about potentials that a facility such as this could provide our youth. From the outside looking in, this facility, this facility could become much more than for sports-related activities, a supportive facility that can provide structure and functionality for our use, for a youth center. Within this plan, we have an opportunity to share our ideas and responsibilities in the use of this facility. A vision of a safe and supportive environment could include a greater outcome for all involved. There is a potential for expanding our ideas to develop this as a multi-use facility. On behalf of the Sandpoint, Sandpoint Teen Center, with an openness amongst all providing paths, I would like to express my interest in future discussions regarding interactive platform for youth activities. With the goals to unite the diversity, the diversities of all precious peoples, we have the responsibilities to explore the possibilities. Let's explore this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darryl. Appreciate that. All right. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting. Next, on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,233,763.3, reflecting $467,531.91 for regular payables, and $766,228.12 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, not, not to remove, and forgive me, because this is something, I just noticed this, and I, forgive me for not knowing who this person is, but I noticed that there's, there was a restoration for Bob Carlson's memorial plaque. I, it makes me sad that I don't know who that is, and we have a memorial plaque, and there was vandalism to it. It's just something that I was unaware of. So, if there's someone with, that can fill me in. I'd like to know who Bob is, since we have a memorial plaque for him.
May I?
Yeah.
Dr. Bob Carlson was a very well-loved person, physician, in this community. He actually started all the bike trails. The state told him, no, you have to dig them yourselves. So, he and some friends got together and started making trails. He was very well-loved, and the angels over Sandpoint were the ones who raised the initial money, of which I'm a part of, to put up Dr. Carlson's on the, on the Bay Trail. And so, that was, that was in memoriam for him because he really did amazing things for our community. He was very well-loved, and he was a stupendous doctor.
Wonderful. So, thank you for doing that restoration.
Thanks, Kate. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving in seconded. This will be real call the.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. The first item under all business is a staff presentation on the Traverse Park renovation. This will be an update. I'll now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to open this and hand it over to Maeve, as she's our project manager. But I also do want to note for mayor and council that Art Thatcher and Lisa Wolf are participating online from Barry Dunn, and they're under contract with us to develop the operations plan for the James E. Russell Center. And also, they're working with us on reviewing overall our operations and planning and staffing and, and things for our Parks and Recreation programming and services in general. They've been very focused over the last four months on community meetings that we've had and meeting with the design-build group on the development of the James E. Russell Center. They've also been working closely with Maeve and myself with the USTA. So, that's the U.S. Tennis Association, to ensure that the facility that is developed is in compliance with their guidelines. So, USTA offers a technical assistance and a grants program, and we submitted an application to them about six weeks ago and are in their, approved in their grants program for technical assistance and review of the facility to ensure that we can use it for tennis tournaments. And they also are looking at pickleball as an element with them as well. And then, we are also pursuing funding with them and having conversations about restoration of our four outdoor courts that are located at the site as well. For those who have been down there, we have a bird bath that's forming in there in a crack. And so, we are simultaneously pursuing how we refurbish those courts. We released a survey that is informing Art and Lisa's efforts in addition to the previous community meetings, stakeholder meetings that were held, were held. And we have over 400 survey responses from the community in terms of how they would like to use the facility, how they would like to pay for any costs associated with the facility. So, they're beginning going through that analysis of all of those surveys. For those that follow our surveys online, just a reminder that the numbers that you see for surveys that are online, those are registered users submitting surveys. So, when a survey actually closes and we're reporting on the results to council and we're looking at the surveys, those are both registered survey users, so through our Open Town Hall platform, as well as those who have requested to remain anonymous. So, when you go online, if you were following while the survey was open, you're seeing from registered users. That's how you get to that about 200 number. And then, the 400-plus number is all of those who wanted to remain anonymous. So, we collect all of those survey results, and obviously, that will be part of the analysis. There's been a lot of speculation and excitement about this facility. And kind of to give a broad overview, we're still in a design phase of that. And a reminder to the council and the public about this, a contract was awarded for the construction of the facility at this Traverse Park site back in June. It was awarded to Emmerich Construction, who is the prime with a team made up of ALSC architects and Dreamland, Dreamland, yes, Dreamland, who has constructed our existing skate park and will be designing and constructing the expansion to the skate park and some other team members. So, that contract was awarded. And again, it's a design-build project. So, that's a little bit different than what people are used to through the public setting, where you go through design, you get your final design, and then you're putting it out to bid for contract. In a design-build, design and the build team are all working together throughout the whole process, and they have a maximum budget that they have to design and build to. So, one of the reasons we chose that path with this particular project is we had a set amount of dollars that could go towards this facility. And so, they have to design and construct to the budget that we provided and meet all of the elements that were included in the RFP, which I know, again, Maeve is, Maeve is going to go over with you in a minute. Unfortunately, our process is taking a little bit longer than was initially anticipated. We were hoping to be out with design by now, but the volatile construction market, as most of you probably know, I know Kate especially, with building a house, and we've been delays in getting surveyors, and we're still waiting for a final survey. There were geotech analysis that needed to happen where they're analyzing soil conditions, ground conditions for construction, and pulling together all of those elements. And then, in a volatile construction environment right now, where prices are changing regularly, it's a, it's a difficult mix to try to work through. But again, they have to meet the minimum performance standards, and Maeve will go over those with you. As of today, the latest update that we have is we should be back with design and what the public will be seeing hopefully in late December, at the very latest, I would say by January, and we are still looking at a construction next year. And with that, I will hand it over to Maeve, but I just wanted to give the background on this and to some of the feedback that we got tonight. There has been a lot of interest, and, and we knew that was coming with a facility like this, or we lack indoor facilities. That is what our Parks and Recreation Plan was one of the key findings in our Parks and Recreation Plan done by Green Play, who has now been absorbed into, emerged with Barry Dunn. So, again, that group is very familiar with our Parks and Recreation Plan, and. again, that group is very familiar with our Parks and Recreation Plan and and we have a need for more indoor space. And again, this particular space, the primary purpose and focus of this space is court sport. So and we're working with a limited budget, but as you will see, we, future phasing was a part of this as well. And so that multi-use has certainly been considered and the public will see that in the design that ultimately comes out. So Maeve, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Well, it is one of those days where if you've ever ordered your significant other or child a gift and you've been waiting and waiting, get updates that the gift is coming, but you haven't received it yet. That's kind of where we are right now. I know that the gift is coming and I more than anyone want to tell you exactly what it is, but I'm going to tell you where we are and I'm going to give you an update and I'm also going to tell you, we know it's coming. So the team, we've worked really hard on the guiding principles and we actually, you know, this got flushed out pretty significantly, the amount of designers and the thought that goes into defining this. This, this is what defines what the project is going to look like and feel and what's going to be included. The number, or not the number, they're not, they're not ranked by hierarchy, but the first one is to celebrate the donors. As you know, in the Russell family, James Z Russell is who the facility is in honor of, but it is his wife Jenny and his, his beloved son Jim, who made the donation. And it's in Mr. Russell's honor that the naming of the facility and the signage acknowledgement would be in their honor. In addition, we had two art sculptures, bronze art sculptures that were donated and we were able to participate in what, what those sculptures would look like. And that was as a result of hearing about the story of Mr. Russell and how he was raised here in Sandpoint and he was part of the Patrick McManus stories and through that, that process of learning about the family and learning about Mr. Russell, we were able to help facilitate these donations of bronze sculptures that are going to be included and integrated into the landscape and not, not on a pedestal. And we've been going back and forth on how they're not going to be on a pedestal. They're going to be integrated where you can interact. The idea is that that story and the Sandpoint stories gets carried throughout the project. There's a community-focused component. One of the guiding principles is to provide a hub for indoor activity. As you know, we have a lack of indoor availability. We, we heard about it tonight and we hear about it every time it starts to get a little cold out. The wind starts to blow, it gets a little wet. We know that everyone would like to go inside at least a little bit around here. The prioritization has been from the beginning, tennis and pickleball. And there is a priority to enhance the existing surrounded park amenities. We will remind you Traverse Park is historically a dump site. It's a landfill. So significant amounts of work have to go in to assure that the soil we build on isn't going to collapse under us. And so we've actually gone through two rounds of soil board, foreign analysis, the geotechnical analysis, and we just wrapped that up. So that's a significant amount of risk that we have to assure that we're not going to build something and then it will crack or collapse. And also with that, enhancing the existing park amenities. The park was built in many phases over say the eighties and the nineties and it really hasn't received much love since then. It's been maintained as is. And so we've been trying to leverage as much of this project funding into what it could look like in the future and referencing the park master plan for our guiding document of what that would look like. One of the main, main ideas of this project is to cap, capture a grand entrance and establish a new gateway plaza at the park's entryway that would provide an invigorated sense of place, incorporates action, active function and embraces distant views. So we've heard the community, we know ourselves, we don't want to block the views to the mountains. The view sheds are part of what makes Sandpoint's character so rich and strong. Having that strong access that alley of the trees and how do you maintain that while still provide a building facility has been part of the puzzle piece that we've been working on. High performance. A Sandpoint is a sophisticated town. Look at the facility that we are in. Came from a big city, as you know, and our facilities are if not better than some of our premier cities in the entire nation. We have high standards for performance and that was related to the team. We've specifically asked for a fully inclusive ADA barrier-free facility. We've asked for sustainability measures to meet or exceed lead energy efficiency. And we've asked for it to function in a way that would minimize operational costs. And that's where we lean on our partners from Barry Dunn to guide us. We've also included in our proposal and part of the guiding principles is effective project phasing. And I'm so excited to tell you, we are pretty close to figuring out all those phases. We're trying to figure out, determine and strategize both the short and long-term priorities for park planning and implementation. When I came here and I was given a concept plan, it was just that. It was a concept master plan, extremely high level. We are now into the schematic design and we are almost at design development. We've been working internally with our building staff and our permitting team on the city, city side and our engineers and we are moving as swiftly as we can. And the idea with doing that is to deliver something that was promised back during the master planning phase, but do it in a way that brings it up to speed with current conditions and current priorities and maximize efficiencies. And finally, our last guiding principle is to provide something that is uniquely standpoint. And being an outsider, I had to figure out what that was to lead you all and to lead this project. So capturing the vernacular, the character of the site, the character of the community, and then celebrating the local natural resources has become a guiding principle. So we've heard you. We've heard this town. We have conducted since this early spring, we've conducted public meetings, multiple focus group meetings. We've put out the survey that Jennifer just told you about. And prior to all of that, I call it that visioning two point O. Prior to that, there were over two years of public outreach and engagement for the parks master plan that was adopted in 2020. And during that master plan conceptual phase and everything that was adopted, the community decided that that site at, at Traverse was indeed the site for a, an enclosed tennis facility with additional pickleball courts. They desired the expansion of the skate park. They also identified the playground to be upgraded to an ADA accessible splash pad. The bathrooms deferred maintenance, they needed to be replaced. And the bikers spoke loud and clearly that they desired a bike skills facility so they can train and practice skills right here within the city limits. Of course, with all of that comes the expansion of the parking lot. And if you've ever been on the field, you know that the fields, the ball players have been requesting repeatedly to fix the fields. All of those are the initial feedback that was adopted. So that's where, that's my baseline. That's where we started with. So then the next step was when we went through our public engagement process this spring and into the summer, and even as recently as last week, we continue to vet these priorities over and over. Every time we, the designers give me a new concept, a new material, a new anything, we, we bring in the key stakeholders and we vet these. So I'm going to go through the high level of what the results are so far. The stakeholders and then the concerns, I'll identify the concerns and finally I'll tell you about the design considerations. These are not, the design considerations are not final, but I can tell you this is the trend. This is what we're trying to achieve based on what we've heard. So the first group is tennis. And they said very loud and clearly to the point of, I'd say stalking, I mean, let's get real here. They came to our office almost every single day for about five months. Almost every single day. And if I didn't see them at City Hall, I saw them outside. And all ages from the children all the way up to the seniors were telling us, please keep the outdoor courts. Everyone loves those outdoor courts and they have such a great reference or relevance to this community. People here actually really love being outside and they were saying, we'd rather just stay outside. Please keep those courts. So we are considering keeping those and at the same time, we were hearing that the lighting is horrible. We know that the courts need to be refurbished. And the lighting needs to be updated to a night sky, dark sky compliant LED, energy efficient lighting. And this whole time, we've been vetting this concept of keeping the courts and what that would look like from the master plan and how if we reconfigure those and we reconfigure others, that how could this all work from an operations perspective? And then the neighbors, the neighbors spoke up loud and clear and I do recognize a few in the audience. So thank you for those of you that came out tonight. The neighbors have, have been very vocal about maintaining their view shed and, and you can't blame them. The view shed is, was why people move here and why people probably brought their property in that area. They've also been very concerned about the noise. The noise from the batting cage where it currently exists is very, very difficult for people to manage when there's a game. And we've looked at it under design consideration to move the building to the west of the existing courts. We think that that concept could solve a couple of these issues. It would, one, keep the existing tennis courts. And two, it would help maintain the buffer vegetation. That's currently where the skills bike course is to the north of the courts. And it would also help the realignment of the ball fields. And then once we realign the ball fields and the parking lot in the next phase, that would result in moving that cumbersome batting cage to the west is where we're thinking, to the west over by the southwest corner of the park. And then more concerns from the neighborhoods, the parking overflow into the neighborhood. If you've ever been there during a soccer game, you know it's all up and down the street, but actually the parking lot is well-loved and it needs to be expanded. We are actively pursuing a land water conservation grant. This park, the Traverse Park, has actually been a recipient of two former land water conservation grants in the past. We're optimistic that we'll be able to pursue this one in this next fiscal cycle, which is, the grant is due in January. That is federal funding and there's a lot of nuances. This park is multiple parcels, so we have to replat it and make it one big large parcel, which is not easy. It's, we're still working on that internally. And staff is really working with me as quickly as they can, prioritizing this project to make that happen. But ultimately, we, we do feel confident that we'll have the funding in hand for the overflow parking and for the expansion of the ball fields and reconfiguration of the ball fields. So that will be one whole phase. The neighbors have also said loud and clear, particularly the elderly, they love to walk in that park and the access is, is challenging as it is. If you come into the park off the south side, you come off of West Pine Street, or yeah, West Pine Street, sorry. And if you come in that direction, you have to navigate the skaters and the traffic and anybody in the parking lot just to get to the trail. And so we are proposing to reconfigure the pedestrian route along the southeast property line. So the new pathway would come from North Pine Street around the existing tennis courts. Now there would of course be a stronger gateway access trail once the, the entire project is built out. But for purposes of the first phase and probably the next couple of phases, we think that that will be the main access route on that southeast side. Pickleball. Pickleball is the hottest sport. We've heard from them. They're not actually as demanding as you may think. They, they simply just want to be able to teach they want a facility where they can run their coaching program and they'd really like to be included in the indoor courts. And they have a lack of public courts. They only have one public court right now in town and that's at Lakeview and that's actually a refurbished basketball court. So it's not a new court. So for, for all the, the noise out there and for the fact that pickleball is the hottest and fastest growing sport in America and it's accessible to all ages, it certainly is. It's good to include them in this court sport facility. And the result is that the scope of the project is specifically for, for, for tennis courts, multi-stripped with sixteen pickleball court options. And that does include netting and the programming will include education. We've heard from the bikers. There is a desire for educational opportunities and to teach skills in town. We've heard loud and clear that the bikers would like an asphalt or hardened surface pump track and a skills course. That is something that we have, we've been studying with Dreamland, the skate park designers. And I think collaboratively, we've all made the recommendation that the skate park, which the skate park would still remain all-wheeled and it still would be open for all wheeled users and all abilities. However, we felt that the bikers are such a large population and a growing population that it did warrant that they would have their own area to the west of the park. And so that's where we're landing and part of the scope is to, it is actually included to design that, that skills area for the bikers. The skaters, as we mentioned, Dreamland Skate Park has been engaged. We didn't know who we were going to, who, who we were going to get for a contractor. I thought the skaters might protest as well if they didn't get Dreamland. They love, they love their contractor. They've been working with them on and off in different phases for, I guess, over fifteen years now. And again, similar to tennis, they just simply want it expanded so they can serve more users. This isn't about a selfish group. This is about a group who wants to expand the user base to be more inclusive of, of other users, particularly users who are not as skilled as the ones that can ride in the bowl. They've also asked for outdoor lighting and lighting that's specific for a skate park. So Dreamland is going to design a specific lighting for them. So that means that they'll be able to see better. And then basketball, volleyball and even handball and a few other sports. We've heard from those users as well. We know that there is a desire and there's a demand and there's a need for more additional building facilities. And so we have been talking with the team about a planned future phase and that's, we're planning now for the future. That way we can figure out the permitting, we can figure out the cost, we can start pursuing real, real costs, real funding. So we're working on that as well. The playground. My background is in inclusive, barrier-free playgrounds. I have designed and built, I think my thirteenth one is supposed to get built next summer. On up in Alaska. It is my passion to see the playground become truly accessible and barrier-free and usable by all ages and all abilities. And the community asked in the master plan for it to be a splash pad. So we are currently planning for the future splash pad playground. We have some, I have some funding in my park budget for inclusive playgrounds and we will be allocating that for a future phase with the playground splash pad. And just to be really clear, all improvements, every improvement on public property has to adhere to federal ADA regulations. So no matter what, that's the minimum. But when I talk about barrier-free or inclusive design, we're looking at above and beyond the minimum ADA inclusivity. And then we've heard from the community at large, we hear it all over, not just in this project, but every project I'm on, about keeping the architecture within the character of town. People do not want to lose what makes this town wonderful. What makes it the best place to live, work, play, be healthy, recreate, visit, all of that. But what is that? How do you capture that character? It's through materials, it's through scale, keeping the buildings the right height. There's a number of design elements that go into incorporating the regional vernacular and we've been working on that to be integrated into the building and the landscape. So those are all the design considerations that are in alignment with the project. A reminder that this is the original scope and concept. This was what we started with. You can see just the Framedon Building. This was actually scaled for the four courts. So the, the size of the original concept and then some sort of an integrated landscape with the two bronze sculptures up there and the cougar that were the donated ones. And then the skate park also included and integrated into that whole site and it forms a very strong, robust gateway. There's actually, you know, by my calculation, there's about seventy-nine minimum performance specifications in the proposal. If you're curious and you want to read about it, they're identified in the RFP. The RFP is the guiding document that was used and included in the contract. It is a legal document. Seventy-nine are what I counted. I would argue about eleven of those are optional that we listed that, you know, if we saw these items. Excellent. So we are working through those right now and it's not an easy task. We can imagine the interpretation of those can be vague. It can be different than what I say. If I say tomato, they might say tomato. It's a lot of going back and forth and it's, it's not for lack of the world's greatest design team. Because I assure you, we have the world's greatest design team that we could get right now in this area and they happen to be from the area. ALSC is a phenomenal art, architecture team and our landscaper, Mike Terrell, is phenomenal. The, the Dreamland is absolutely spectacular. So our designers are working as hard as they can to meet these minimum performance criteria. But as Jennifer told you, we are just in a battle of the current economy and we keep going back and forth and we dug our heels in. So I assure you that the next time you see my face. So I assure you that the next time you see my face, Hannah will have arrived. And we'll be looking at the design. I appreciate your patience. I know this is painful and I know this is a difficult process that not many of us are familiar with. I'm very grateful for your understanding and assurance that we will get there and that package will be delivered.
Thank you, Maeve. Does council have any questions for staff?
No questions, just, and we'll probably get to it. Hopefully Jim can hear, but like what I would really like to hear and have reinforced are Jim's wishes, his desires and have him have the opportunity explicitly state what it is that he and his family want with this. As and as well as a thank you to you, staff, the people that are working on this and an encouragement to our citizenry that they're they're heard. This is a very expansive, large list and let's temper our passions. This is not a bone for us to fight over. This is a wonderful gift and endowment given by a very generous family and we should treat it with the utmost respect.
Well said, counselor. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Next is a presentation by council, which is a consideration of adoption of the urban forestry management plan. And I'll now yield the floor to cities, to the city's urban forester, parks, planning and development manager, Maeve Nevins-Labtar. Take it away again, Maeve.
Thank you. Different, different podium, different hat. I wear a couple hats, as you know, and for the public that doesn't know, I'm also the urban forester. And I'm very excited to tell you that after a year of working here, we are about to deliver the very first Sandpoint Urban Forestry Master Plan. We consulted with Jim Flott and his consulting company well before I arrived. I inherited the contract and Jim was very concerned this past fall when yet another staff had been put in front of him and what on earth, we had to still do inventory and winter's coming and we had to get the tree committee moving and all these great things. But the tree committee, I believe most of you are here tonight and I want to thank my committee. Molly and Sharon and Gail, oh my gosh, thank you for being here and I think some others are online. We've, we, the tree committee, myself, staff, other, other urban forestry consultants that I work with from the Idaho Department of Lands and the folks that are my peers and my advisors in community forestry have all reviewed this, not once, but upwards of three to four times. So we've been hashing through as recently as an hour ago and I have one edit. So before we get into the edit, I'm going to invite Jim Flot up. He came all the way down from Spokane. And Jim, if you want to come on up and we can bring up the document. So we have, and I'm going to dive right into the page that has an edit. So I'd like to call attention to page seventy-four of the document. Make sure it's sharing. Bear with me here. Lots of patience tonight. Thank you.
That's good. Right there's good.
Okay, how's that?
Make it smaller so you can see the whole text under the table, please.
Okay, so page seventy-four is the financial page. And if I was city council, that'd be the one I glob to. But we had a typo in our last document that was saying we needed about a million dollars a year. So if you caught that one, I know I got a few messages. We missed that, you know, it's a almost two hundred page document. So apologize, that was probably the most pivotal page, but we've edited it multiple times now. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Jim, and
Thanks, Maeve.
Carry away.
Sorry, Maeve, what was the typo you were identifying?
Well, it wasn't necessarily a typo. It was, it was a, we had budget numbers from twenty twenty-one as well. And I just got the the final actual operating budget just a few days ago. So this was all kind of at the nth hour. And then when we were typing in, there were a few zeros added here and there. Not to reflect my math skills, it's just a lot of zeros got punched in. Anyway, so yeah.
So where is it? I also missed, I don't see where it's located here.
On page seventy-four.
This is corrected, what he's showing us.
This is the correct version. Everything else in the plan is current.
Can you scroll up just a little bit on that page, please, so we can see that top paragraph? So you've corrected the the city's budget from twenty twenty-one. In the report we received, it was twenty-four million dollars, but actually it was forty-one million dollars, correct, or forty point six million?
Yeah, that's a round number. It was forty, forty thousand five hundred and ninety-seven, so forty-six.
Right, so that's been corrected from twenty-four million to forty point six million.
Correct, because that was from previous information that was given to me from Kim back in the day when
That was probably the budget back in Kim's day.
Yeah.
Quick question, though, the the four tenths of one percent is now adjusted to that forty point six million. So that gives us a hundred and sixty-two thousand down from nine hundred and twelve thousand.
Correct.
Okay, so so the, the, this was my whole area of questioning. So that the original report said, we need to increase our tree maintenance budget from fifty thousand dollars a year to nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year. Now you're saying we need to increase it from fifty to a hundred and sixty-two?
Yes. I can understand.
It's way, way easier now, thank you.
I assume so. That's, that's why we're on this page. But I will, with this caveat, bear in mind that four tenths of one percent of the annual budget for any city is the minimum standard. And that doesn't include staff. That's just operating things, as you'll see in this budget. There's really not a whole lot of staff dollars in there for a dedicated person to manage the urban forestry program. So that's something that needs to be considered in this process of this plan. Because Sandpoint is at a size from population of people, but also trees to meet the society municipal harbor standards, to have a full-time person to actually manage your trees. You're at seven to ten thousand trees, give or take, and there wasn't a complete inventory completed, but figures are around seven plus thousand. And that's where we start to see trees with no management, no supervision start to decline. And that's what's happening here. Every tree that I looked at needs some kind of work. So that's why you see reflected in that budget up there. See that planting is the lowest percentage of the operating budget? That's because there's no reason to plant trees if you can't take care of them. So you need to begin to maintain what you have. And that's why the pruning budget is the highest dollar budget in that operating budget figure. Because pretty much every, every street tree along the streets in Sandpoint needs some kind of attention. So without the staff person dedicated to that, Maeve is kind of part-time doing this among the other ten or twenty hats that she wears. So that can be managed through a contract, through specifications on how to do that type of work. But that's where the money needs to go initially is to maintain what you have. Otherwise, it's going to continue to degrade. And it's like any other infrastructure item. If you don't take care of it, it begins to decline and deteriorate. And this actually is the most valuable asset that the city owns. You're talking about millions of dollars worth of trees that are here along the street. That doesn't include private trees. When you start to bring in the whole population of trees in the city, then it's it's billions of dollars. And that's not timber value at all. Timber has nothing to do with this at all. It's a totally different type of appraisal process. So when we developed the plan, just like Jennifer and Maeve were talking about when they were talking about Traverse Park, we went through this kind of the same process. We talked with staff, we talked with the tree committee, they were actively involved in this process. We put out a public survey, got responses back and you'll see the survey is actually part of the plan as well. For the most part, everybody was in favor of what we're trying to do with this plan. There's very positive feedback on everything. So we looked at where you're at right now and then where should we be to have a program that reflects the trees, the the community desires and industry standards? And that's what the plan is built on really. So, and those are the budget numbers. This is just an example. Many of the communities I work with in the west actually have a dedicated assessment based on homeownership that goes straight to the urban forestry budget. Like Helena, like Kalispell, like some cities in central Washington as well. And that's what that is about, that that figure for the annual expenditures. That eighteen sixty-two reflects the amount of money that would be required from each homeowner to reach that operating budget. So that's maybe what? Four lattes over the course of a year, depending upon what your flavor of drink is. Or, or, just a second, Jason, or, or if you fancy something stronger, that might be one single malt. Okay, Jason, question?
Is that eighty-seven hundred homeowners, a, and a?
That's like the two thousand, the most recent
That's residents, but
Yeah, that's the most recent census population of, of
But on a per household basis, that would be approximately three times that much or two. And I'm not, I'm still, it's, you know, twelve espressos.
Yeah, it's still, it's still a very small figure on an annual basis.
I agree, yeah.
So it's something that's very affordable, that can really kind of kickstart this program. Which is why you you got a grant from the Idaho Department of Lands, which paid for this project. That is considered seed money so that you do take this plan and move forward. The plan is a, is a roadmap on where you need to get to where you want to get this program and that's essentially it.
And those other communities that you mentioned, was that a separate levy, a separate levy?
Yes, okay, yes. And some of those have been in place for twenty, thirty years and they've actually raised some of those rates. We worked with a couple cities in the northwest and they basically went through this process. They already had a program, but they were revising everything, updating everything. Some of the results of that were actually to get those assessments doubled based on support from the community and the needs that the tree program had. So any other questions or comments?
Could you, Mr. Murray? So it was obviously an expansive report, which I would imagine you probably had a really good time with because it was, I mean, it's trees, so that's kind of your jam and we have some really amazing trees. The, the two things that stuck out the most is our infrastructure conflicts that we have. And the, this community has, has explicitly said that they value and want sidewalks. Okay, and now this is also telling us that we value our urban forest. Those are going to be two needs that are potentially competing for a similar dollar. So that's, I think that that's important for our public to understand that if in fact, we're going to try to do both of these things, it's, it's going to be expensive. The, the diagrams that you had shown for the infrastructure for some of those trees that are dealing with sidewalks and then some of the, the conflicts that we have, they're significant. On top of wrong trees planted at the wrong sites. My hope is now that that has been made clear and moving forward, the inventory of trees or the list of trees that we have for the new neighborhoods moving in, that we can get in front of that and remove more conflicts. Like we don't want to, like what you were saying, let's maintain and take care of the ones that we have, not create more problems. So what I would like to know, though, is some of those wrong planted, wrong site examples. And if you can't come, I'm kind of throwing
Sure, I mean, some of the newer, what I noticed, and this is a, this is a big problem that just doesn't go to the trees. It actually goes to planning of the city. So we know from my industry that people want tree-lined streets. We've, that's research that's fifty years old or older. When you show them a picture of a, of a tree, a street that has no trees on it versus the one that's lined with trees and a nice canopy, that's what they want. But if you want that, you have to create adequate space for the trees. That comes down to planning and designing and working with the people that design and build the streets. So if you want to avoid future conflicts with sidewalks and streets, you've got to give the trees enough space for their root systems. That's the key right there. And a five-foot strip doesn't accommodate even a small street tree. You will have conflicts. It's, it's just going to happen. So the solutions, there are many solutions to remedy those kind of existing conflicts. As I pointed out in the plan, there's a lot of options. And there isn't one solution that fits every tree sidewalk conflict. It just depends on the site and what's going on on the site. So there's a lot of options that will be applied to resolve some of those lifted sidewalks and some of the conflicts. One of the things that could be easily resolved in some of the areas that's pointed out in the plan is the way we look at planting trees near those infrastructure items is, okay, we all want sidewalks. Everybody, we need sidewalks in cities, that's a given. But how much of the concrete do we need? Do we need fifteen-foot wide sidewalks and then we put a tree in a four-by-four coffin, as we call it? We don't need fifteen-foot wide sidewalks. In most cases, we can get by with ADA requirement standards and have ten feet of open soil space or create things like pocket parks where you have a green space and get away from this engineered line of trees that are basically have a very short life anyway. So there, it comes down to planning and designing from the get-go and making sure that the trees are involved in that process. That's where you need to start on, on all new projects, whether it's street sidewalks, Traverse Park, whatever. You have to consider the space required for the trees as well going forward from here. That's kind of what the plan is about, fixing the problems. That's going to be, as you said, Andy, a big, big dollar cost.
Right, and so to, to that, and I appreciate that, what, one way to look at a viable, living, vibrant city is its trees. So essentially, its lungs, it's like literally, it's its ability to breathe. And so then those sidewalks, those pathways, those roads, those could be our veins and arteries. Like those two things, not to get too, but they have to, they cannot compete against one another. They have to be planned, managed concurrently with one another over the twenty-year plan that you have. So I agree with you. And so I want our public to also hear, because we have heard the pathways, the multimodal transportation plan. We've heard that over and over and over again. I appreciate that and we have to value our lungs. We have to be able to breathe.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the trees are the lungs of the planet. Along with the oceans and the, but for cities, it's the trees that provide the oxygen and all the other amenities that we enjoy. So yeah, you have to make sure there are consideration in, in every kind of, whether it's roads, sidewalks, parks, whatever, they need to be at the table whenever that design is being planned.
First of all, I thought it was absolutely great. I'm a nerd and reading, I didn't read all hundred and twenty-nine pages. I left some of the resources alone. But I was really impressed. I mean, I'm married to a forester and I, I thought about when we moved into our house thirty years ago, there was a mountain of ash growing like this. And so my husband goes, nope, took the saw or took his chainsaw and went out and cut it down because it was growing sideways. And, and you know, we would have gotten in trouble for that because it's like, I don't think you were supposed to do that. But he's a forester and so he said, so many of these trees are in just such dire straits that, you know, even we're in a little rental house right now and there was no forethought. It seems as though a lot of the trees were afterthought in some of the cases. But that's, you know, that was, that spoke to the time and place. But I thought the report was my, the part that I liked, well, first of all, I also passed out when I saw the, when I But I thought the report was my, the part that I liked, well, first of all, I also passed out when I saw the, when I saw the budget. I was like, whoa, wait, what?
I did too, when I saw it.
Right, but the education piece, I think that, you know, that's been missing too, is that educating the citizens about the trees in the right of way. And, you know, that they should be cared for, I think that's an important, and I really like that, I like the way the plan was really holistic. It talked about managing the program or managing the trees, and then it talked about what the trees provide, you know, for mental health and for breathing. And, and I just, a lot of work went into it, I commend the tree committee and Maeve and you, I really appreciate it. Honestly, I think this is the first report that's more highlighted than there is white space here. Because I just was so fascinated with all of it, I found out what a tree coffin is. I found out that, you know, the branch habit, and I said to my husband, the forester, why don't you know this? And he said, because I'm not an urban forester.
There is a difference, there is a difference.
Well, and the thing that Justin and I talked about too was like the example of the oak tree. When it's in, you know, in, when it's in, in nature, it, it'll live four hundred years. But it was, when it's in confined space, it'll live, what is it, four years?
Maybe, maybe, seven to ten years on average, depends on the city environment.
And that's sad, I mean, I, you know, we're on Oak Street right now, and the, it's just fabulous to see the, you know, the trees and everything. So I, I really commend you, I think, I think it's just, I think it's a great report, it's very all together. And again, I really, I enjoyed reading it all, I thought it was really fabulous, but, you know, I, I hang out with a guy who loves trees. So, but thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to help.
Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I too, I don't want to get too redundant, but I really geeked out on this as Kate did. And this, I was one hundred percent fast, and one of the most fascinating documents I've received in the ten and a half months since I've been on council. Definitely not in my wheelhouse, as a small business owner, my, my experience with city-owned trees has been that a frustration. That I would be responsible for taking care of a tree that I did not pick in the right way and that was planted wrong. And I feel a little bit vindicated as well now, after reading this. But it, it really does have some great legs to it right now. I think one of the most interesting things is how many times have we been in the council chambers here? And public hearings where we're determining case-by-case basis in terms of the character of the community. And typically, when we start talking about the character of community, we're dealing with buildings, you know, does the building that was built in nineteen-ten? Have more character than the brand-new building that's been built in the last five years that has a more modern look? One thing that I, I failed to take into consideration was how much the character of our city. Is predicated based upon our tree scape and our urban forest as well. I think more private individuals, I think there's great opportunities for public-private partnerships. And I think the volunteerism, we've seen the tree committee and many kudos to the tree committee for. Uh, but also gives us, this document gives us an opportunity to pull a lot of volunteerism. In from people that when necessary, like myself, who are this fascinated by it. And, and see the benefits of the urban forest in our communities, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. So the other thing is that this plan is gonna open the doors for more grant funding. Cause it's an indication, if you adopt this, oh, that's not it. It's actually just a Word document on that.
But that's cool.
No, it's cool. So it's an indication that the city is making a commitment, and that's what grant funders look for. That's why Idaho Department of Lands, when the next grant cycle comes around, you guys need to reapply. Say, hey, we were successful with the money you gave us before, here's where we want to go with the next step. And that's just local funding, there's with the inflation reduction or the, what is it? The, the new.
Infrastructure bill.
Infrastructure plans coming out. Part of that, there's gonna be billions of dollars that's gonna be targeted for urban forestry. Because of the whole climate issue thing going on. There's gonna be a lot of.
Tree Storm video.
Sandpoint ID UFMP. Upways. So, Meg's just copying the Word version of the PDF that you guys have. Cause couldn't send it, it's.
Too big, right?
Yeah, and some of the file transfer protocols. Didn't like, didn't like the formatting.
Mr. Mayor, I had a comment while they're looking for that. I just wanted to thank you for your expertise, I think this is something that's kind of been long overdue. Coming from Planning Commission, then to City Council and watching all of our new downtown streets. Urban renewal money be spent. It seems like maybe everything wasn't done quite right with some of those trees, and that's really disappointing. So, you know, having sat up here through that, we were assured we were doing the right thing. Have the right experts, so now with Maeve on board and your direction coming in. I'm looking forward to the trees because something I've always really enjoyed, so.
Great, there's a lot of opportunities, let's look at it that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I have a question, Jim, great work by the way, about the section of your plan on ordinance review. You identified about twelve areas that we could improve our, our urban forestry ordinances. And then I was also interested in table two, which compares sandpoints, tree ordinance. To about twenty, twenty-four other cities in the Northwest. And I think besides Clarkston, we are missing more elements than any other city in the Northwest from our city ordinances around trees. Is there any benefit in your opinion of, of looking at amending those ordinances or improving those ordinances? Before we've secured funding for this, you know, plan, I mean, if, if, if we change the ordinances, but then we keep our budget at fifty thousand dollars. And we don't come up with the other hundred and twelve that we need to fulfill this plan. Are we just, you know, setting expectations that we're not able to fulfill? Or should we start tackling these ordinances, ordinance shortcomings immediately?
The, the two things that the research indicates that are successful parts of an urban forestry program. Are, are one, the ordinance, and two, a tree inventory. So yeah, I think you should start working on some of the suggestions on the ordinance, and, and one of the appendix has. A series of places to go for writing an ordinance or revising an ordinance. I, I wouldn't necessarily, I mean, you could look at other cities, just as comparative, comparative tool. But remember, they're different than you are, there are some similarities between small cities across the Northwest, actually across the US. But the socioeconomic strat of the population, the, the people living in those cities, that's all different. So you have to really tailor your ordinance to what the community desires. And then fold that in with what the industry standards are. So like, some of those sections that I pointed out, it's, it's not, it's not a critical area. It's just there are some things missing related to like industry definitions. It should, where they're fairly easy to fill in, but some of the other things might require a vote of you folks to actually change. Some of the language in there. So there were suggestions in there about the tree committee makeup, for instance.
Sure.
So, but for the most part, a lot of those changes that are suggested in there really reflect. Enhancing some of the things that are already in the ordinance, it's just there's some gaps.
Is this a project, perhaps this is for Maeve or Jennifer, that the tree committee could focus some of their attention on? In the, in the year ahead is, is looking at our current ordinances and comparing it to other cities and seeing how we can maybe propose to city council some. Changes to our ordinances? It seems like that's kind of the low hanging fruit here, it doesn't cost us money to change our ordinances. But if we can make some changes that would have meaningful impacts on our urban forest without, you know, before we've secured the extra, you know, tripling of our budget. Seems like that should be a priority, do, would you agree?
I would agree, that's, that's a place to start, that's one of the tasks that the tree committee is usually charged with. That's the initial point where you start, and then they bring it to the public for review. Bring it to you folks for a review as well, that's just like any other ordinance process. So, yeah, I think that's a good place to start before you start making a lot of changes. Okay, let's get this, the, the, the ordinance in place that governs the program. And then you can start building from there. But it really comes down to the three things we talked about is the inventory. Cause without an accurate inventory of what's going on in the community, it's like trying to manage a warehouse. And you don't know what's in, in the warehouse, so. And that really will help you refine the budget and also really target your budget to the more critical areas. So, cause you're, you know, most communities don't have enough money to take care of everything. Otherwise, there'd be every pothole in Sandpoint, Spokane, we'd be filled and we'd have nice paved streets. But you don't have a budget for everything, but, so you, you, it's tree triage, you know? We fix the worst and keep working down that list with the budget. And in order to build those budgets, you have to know where the need is. So, and that comes from going out and actually assessing the trees. It's like, you know, you go to the doctor, and if you don't go to the doctor and then call the doctor and say, hey, I got these. Symptoms, you know, give me, give me a pill, and he's gonna go, or she's gonna go, sorry, we don't do it that way. Yeah, so you really have to know what's going on out in the field to come up with some accurate estimates for everything. But the place to start, as you said, Jason, is get the ordinance dialed in, get the public behind that as well.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Okay, thank you very much for that presentation.
You're welcome.
So you do have a resolution in front of you?
Thanks, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Pam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it looks like we have one, go ahead and take the podium, and if you could fill out a, a comment card afterward, I appreciate it, thanks.
Clay Hutchinson, the living standpoint, fascinating study and report on the trees. Clearly, you have to draw some guidelines somewhere, and you've pretty well done it with the city-owned urban trees versus the private landscape. But the character of Sandpoint, there are a bunch of what I would call majestic, super-large trees in town that have been here for a long time. And many of those are probably getting to the end of their useful life, and if they're on private land. Sometimes the decision is just to take them down due to safety, I know when the wind starts blowing, those big trees get a little scary. I have one on our property and we're debating what to do with this, it's a relative wild kingdom with ospreyness and all that kind of stuff. But it gets, it gets a little scary when the wind blows, when you have, have one of the largest trees, let's let. You know, what happens? And so if there's a way to tie in some resource for the private landowners to be able to reach out. So we're not just dealing with this substantial issue, you know, when you have a hundred-foot tall tree, that's a substantial issue, what to do with it? If there's a way to, to tie some resource for those majestic trees and the owners that have to deal with those. Rather than just chopping them down, there may be some, you know, expertise that could come into play on some of these giant trees. That, that help us to, to navigate whether we can save them or not, or whether they're just, just really need, need to come down for safety, et cetera, et cetera. I think that would, would go to help some of the private landowners, it's probably not a huge number of trees in the big tree inventory. But, you know, it's a shame when you see these giant trees getting taken down on a, you know, recurring basis. So it's just a thought on, on that to, to, you know, help the character of Sandpoint with the, with the private trees as well, thank you.
Great suggestion, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Anyone else? Okay.
Hello, my name is Sharon Lewis, and I'm a member of the Sandpoint Tree Committee. And I just really wanted to quickly just reiterate that we are at a crossroads right now. With our, our city urban forest with this management plan. And. The, one of the, the key takeaways is, is in, is the perception. Of our urban forest and moving from our urban forest to just being a nice city for our city. To actually being seen as a critical part of our infrastructure. You have touched on that this evening, but I really wanted to reiterate that. And because it, it is infrastructure, our city forest is an infrastructure. Because it is our major filtration system, both for air and for water. And just like our sewage treatment plants, our, our water plants, our streets and sidewalks. And when we start to see our urban forest as infrastructure in a, in our city. I think it's easier than to shift from looking at that budget column. Where we currently spend about fifty thousand dollars, and that's just an estimate. To shifting to, to, to getting to a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for an annual budget. Because it is a critical part of our infrastructure. And that's what I'd like to say, thank you, thank you so much. And thanks to Jim for putting together this report and Maeve for all of her hard work on it as well, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Lewis, appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, well entertain a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the city of Sandpoint Forestry Management Plan, is there a motion? Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselors Pro?
Yes.
Counselor Bro?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes, the next item, yeah. The next item on the agenda is a request for approval of the Culvers Crossing subdivision final plat. City Code Title Ten, chapters one through eight, chapter, sorry, one, eight, E. Counsel approved the preliminary plat on July sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Does counsel have any questions for staff? Okay, would counsel like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the final plat for Culvers Crossing subdivision.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. And I will just add to that, the final plat is, is, if you would oblige me. Jason, to add to your motion here, the final plat is substantially in accordance with an approved preliminary plat. The provisions of the Culvers Crossing Master Development Agreement Exhibit F, Terms of the Infrastructure Improvements have been satisfied as applicable to this action. The final plat conforms with all applicable standards of the Sandpoint City Code. The applicable conditions of the approved preliminary plat have been satisfied and conditions of final plat approval have been provided as presented. To ensure that the recorded document clearly represents property conditions, and there are the underlying supporting elements of your motion. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I would, I would just like to comment that I've been very pleased with the pace of development of Culvers Crossing, this was a long anticipated project. And it seemed like the day after the preliminary plat was approved, they broke ground. And it's been really cool to see that this developer has moved forward at, at a pace that I think we, we expect and hope that most developers will. When we enthusiastically approve a development like this, so I'd, I'd commend the developer for moving forward. And it's, seems like just yesterday that we heard the preliminary, preliminary plat, so he's done great, great work getting this infrastructure. And I did check it out the other day, and it's exactly what we approved, so kudos to the developer on this one.
Great comments. All right, it's been moved and seconded, this will be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Bro?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselors Pro?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Final plat is approved, the next item on the agenda is a report on the recently completed parking study. I'll now yield the Florida City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going to provide a brief introduction and then hand it over to Wendy. Keston and Associates and was our, our consultant who led our parking study. And working with Matt Bell, who was analyzing all of the numbers. You have included in your council packet a, the results of their parking study. And to clarify, because I know we all want to get to what are some changes we may be making relative to our parking management. And particularly Counselor Bro has brought this up several times, wanting to address aspects. This is a two-phase process, so the first phase was the parking study itself, really going through. And, and taking a look at and analyzing the data around the parking, I don't think there are results in here. They're probably shocking to anyone on council, but Wendy, Wendy will summarize those. And some of the preliminary recommendations, but it would be the intent and one of their recommendations to. Preliminary recommendations, but it would be the intent and one of their recommendations to new move into a second phase. Which is actually to move into developing a parking management plan, but first data had to tell us. Really quantify what the issues are. We have a lot of feelings about the parking downtown. We have a lot of perceptions about the parking downtown, but. On their initial visit when they came through and, and we went through all of the parking areas in downtown, it was remarkable to me. I think when Wendy looked over and said, we do these studies all over in communities across the country and. Nearly every city thinks they have a parking problem. You have a parking problem. So. With that, I'll hand it over to Wendy and Matt to kind of give you a high level summary of, of their study and some of the initial preliminary recommendations. Did I actually say that? Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Matt, if you want to go ahead and pull up the presentation. So as Matt's pulling up the presentation, I'll just do a brief introduction. Really, the purpose of this initial parking study, as Jennifer said, was to collect data during the typical summer peak hours. We didn't want to hit Sandpoint when there were multiple events going on, but we also wanted to hit it when it was just kind of your average summer day. And the goal is to really understand the parking supply and demand, define the problem, if you will. So we started with a drone flyover. I don't know if any one of you noticed that we did have a drone flying over and that allowed us to. Get a really good understanding of the parking supply. So we were able to see curb lines, paint on the, paint on the street. Paint on the parking stalls. And so that gave us our good base map. Next, we sent out our data gathering experts to collect. Typical Thursday parking data and Saturday data in July. So they had a camera in their car and for twelve hours each day, they circulated the downtown and waterfront areas. To collect the occupancy data. How many cars were actually parked in those stalls? As part of that, we also collected license plate slash vehicle data to look at the turnover rates. Were, were cars staying in their two hour spots for two hours or were they staying there for three hours? So this data helped us inform enforcement concerns and to see what was really happening. So with that, we got something to the order of magnitude of forty-six thousand rows of data to analyze. And I know Jennifer was very patient as we waited through all of that data. So the next step was, as Jennifer really mentioned, in keeping with parking management best practices. The data was gathered to be used as a starting point to inform future demand. Based on redevelopment and growth. So now we've got a baseline what's happening during those peak summer high demand hours. The next step is to do the parking management plan. What does the future demand look like? Where's the redevelopment? Where's their growth supposed to happen? And what are strategies that can be tailored specifically to the unique nature of Sandpoint to optimize the parking supply? And this is really consistent with what you're seeing in other kind of recreation resort communities like Ketchum, Sun Valley, Idaho. Bozeman and Whitefish, Montana. They've all done very similar studies. They're focusing on identifying, implementing and monitoring the effectiveness of their specific management strategies. To really optimize that parking supply. And then some of them, of course, have identified a need and gone on to build additional parking, whether it's a garage or surface parking, depending on the need. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt because he's deep into the data and he can explain it much more. I'm more on the policy end. So Matt, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, just a quick sound check. Can you guys hear me?
You're good.
Awesome. So just have a few slides tonight and let's get it started here. So Wendy kind of went over the study purpose and, and with a particular focus on the data collection part. So I'm going to jump right into the, right into the weeds here a little bit. I'll just start off by saying that this, as Wendy, just reiterating something Wendy mentioned there is, this is, this is like. All the background information that we typically would need in order to do, like develop a parking management plan. So it creates a base point for us to. Develop policies, develop strategies and to evaluate how those policies and strategies ultimately will impact conditions on the street. So it's providing defensible data for those future decision-making purposes. So for first, I'll say that again, we're going to talk a lot about parking supply and parking demand. And when we talk about supply, really what we're referring to are the, the number of stalls that are located within. Both the downtown area as well as within, generally within the waterfront area, we've characterized as a waterfront area. And the supply is also is further broken down into, into on-street stalls and off-street stalls. And within the on-street stalls, so these are all public, these are all public streets, so they're all public stalls, they're available to a majority of users. There are a handful of stalls that are, well, I should say, most of the stalls are available to everybody, sort of the general use folks. The remainder of the stalls are available to only a select number of folks. So you can see in this slide that there are approximately one thousand ninety-seven on-street parking stalls within the, within our study area of downtown Sandpoint. And the stalls that are for selective few folks are those thirty-five ADA stalls, the three loading only spaces. And then seven stalls that we technically aren't stalls, these are spaces that we. While we were collecting the data, we found that people were parking in these spaces on a fairly regular basis, despite the fact that there were no parking signs out there. And so we just counted these as no parking stalls. And, and then I should, I should mention as well as within the downtown area, when we talk about the off-street or the public lot stalls. We're really only talking about those, those public facilities. So those are the ITD lots and the city, city lot. So within the, those, those lots, there is approximately two hundred and forty stalls, of which there are eight ADA stalls. And one stall is designated for police use only. So shifting over to the demand side, we, again, we broke things up between the downtown Sandpoint area and the waterfront area. When we talk about demand, we typically talk about demand in terms of occupancy, duration of stay, turnover, as well as a variety of other different. Performance measures and matrices. For occupancy is probably the most common one and for occupancy, we, we talk a lot about. What would essentially be the effective capacity of the system? For a retail commercial area like downtown Sandpoint, we typically like to see about eighty-five percent occupied on a block by block. Basis or even in an off-street. Pardon me, in an off-street lot, primarily because beyond that, it becomes harder and harder for folks to find, find a spot. And so that contributes to things like extra circulation congestion and just general frustration in the, in the area. So one of our first findings here for the downtown on-street supply is that it's generally below that eighty-five percent threshold. So you can see that, that, um, the, the profile that's shown here shows that it's. It follows a similar profile. Wendy mentioned this, but just to reiterate this, is that this chart is also showing data for both midweek and the weekend. So within the midweek and the weekend, they follow a similar profile where they start off really low in the morning. They hit a peak about the midday and they start tapering off toward the afternoon. And that midday, midweek peak is, is at fifty-seven percent, which is well below effective capacity in the. Weekend, midday peak is there at fifty percent, which again is, is well below the effective capacity.
Matt, can I stop you just for a second? This brings up a question for me.
Yeah.
And it goes back to that comment that we started with, that supposedly you said, Wendy, that. That we really do have a parking problem, but I was actually surprised by this graph. I was expecting to see us much closer to that. You know, max up, much closer to that eighty-five percent threshold, certainly during the peak hours of the day. So does this or does this not tell us that we actually don't have as much of a parking problem downtown as we thought?
Well, let me, let me circle back to that question here in just, just a minute. We've got a couple more slides that'll sort of highlight that. This is, I should, I should highlight a couple of things about this data. This is the overall on-street parking supply for what we looked at. So this is representative of stalls that are, that, that are what we call the no limit stalls. So these are stalls that are on the periphery of the downtown, primarily adjacent to residential uses. Those are some of the lower utilized stalls. Moving in closer to the core, you have your, what your three hour and your four hour stalls that also allow folks with permits to, to utilize those. The, the utilization rates in those get even higher. And then right there in the core of the downtown, you get to your two hour stalls and those stalls are, are at the highest. Those are the ones where the highest amount of, of demand is, is being shown. So the next, the next page actually highlights this pretty well.
And just while, Matt, getting to that next one, just remember we kind of have to paint the full picture. And so that's one piece of it, but wait, there's more coming.
Yeah, so we start off at the highest level of what's the overall system doing and then we start honing in on. Some of the more, more detailed pieces of it. So this is a, this is just a, a couple of different snapshots of some of the maps that are included in the report. That show what the conditions are like during the midweek and during the weekend. Then you can see that, that from, the blue lines are showing where we have of quite a bit of, quite a bit of availability, where we're less than fifty percent occupied. Up through the red lines that are showing where it's ninety-five to a hundred. Technically, we want to be in that eighty-five category. So really you should be looking at the orange and the red as areas where you might be seeing some challenges. So in particular, during the midweek, you can see that a lot of those challenges are sort of focused on Second Street, on First Street, as well as Cedar and Alder. And that, that kind of eastern portion of the downtown. Shifting over to the weekend, that, that, that then becomes more centrally located where it's, it's right there around like Oak Street, Main Street. And balanced between fourth and third. So again, as you get to those stalls that are located more on the periphery, you have a lot more availability versus the stalls that are right there in the, in the core. Where you're having some challenges. So I'm going to circle back on, on some of the impact. I'm going to talk about the off-street here and then I'll circle back to what some of the impacts to. Changes in the off-street could have on the on-street system. So this is probably more what you were expecting to see. So this is the off-street parking supply, or pardon me, off-street demand. In the, in the public parking lots in downtown Sandpoint. So very similar type of a profile for both the midweek and the weekend again, matches the downtown where we have, have an uptick in the morning. And then it slowly tapers off towards the evening. And we have a couple of midday peaks during the midweek, it's eighty-three percent, so just below that effective capacity. And then during the weekend, it's, it's down around seventy-four percent. And so again, maybe, maybe not like screaming out about red flags here, but, but we have. We have talked a little bit about some of the potential impacts that this could have. That, that changes to this off-street system could have to the, to the on-street supply. And Wendy, I have a, have a couple of things that I, I don't know if I should share this, but I was sort of goofing around during the first part of the, the hearing tonight. With some charts and I'll just slide this in here. You tell me if this is showing up on your screens. But really, what this is showing is, we talked about, we talked about some potential impacts to off-street parking lots. And if you, for example, if you lost the ITD lots, this is what your off-street supply then looks like. We're in terms of demand. Here's your eighty-five percent line there and I'll try to make it a little bit bigger. And I cut it off. Sorry, I was trying to help and now I'm making it worse.
We can see it fine.
Okay.
Or we could.
You could. I don't know why it's disappearing on me. There, there we go. Okay. So, and now you can see that when, when there is a potential change to the off-street system, what kind of an impact that has to the, to the. For the rest of the supply. So at this stage, now you're well above a hundred percent and this, this is just assuming that the off-street demand continues the way that it is. So with, so just wanted to highlight that as a, as a, as a sort of a cautionary tale to what, what could happen. If there is changes to your off-street system. So this is what the, this is what the, the maps look like. This is again focused on the downtown Sandpoint area, midweek and the weekend. So we're, the darker orange one there are showing up, both the city lots are. Right there at about eighty-five percent or greater. And we have this little, little stretch over here right up against the waterfront that, that is right at that ninety-five to a hundred percent. So shifting over to the waterfront, again, looking at the supply, the, the waterfront, the on-street supply for the waterfront is really just focused on. On dock street. So it's, it's not, not, not a huge, we didn't look at a very large on-street supply for the waterfront area. But so there's forty-three stalls there, two of which are ADA and two are for, I think those are actually just two of the ADA stalls or the specialty use stalls. And then we have about four hundred and six pub, like stalls within the public lots. And so that's, that's a little, that's a combination of some of the stalls that are, that are dedicated for the city beach lot over at the trail lot. And then a handful of other lots that are over focused in that waterfront area.
Matt, let me interrupt you for a sec. Where did you say those forty-three on-street stalls are located, the waterfront on, on street?
Yeah, those are on, those are on Dock Street, so.
Okay.
It's, it's, um. I could, I could slide a map on here to, to show you what they look like, but you guys are probably more familiar than, than, than I am with where Dock Street is. Exactly.
I, I do have a question if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Yeah.
On the, and this is just semantics, I'm sure, but in figure two A, did we move our EV charging stations down to City Beach?
So we have two EV charging stations that were the original city charging stations at Jeff Jones Square.
Right.
When we did the property swap and acquired the lot down at City Beach that, and BRV Park that was previously owned by the hotel. There are two Tesla charging stations in there. So we actually, the city actually has those and the two downtown.
Okay, because the two downtown are not, I, thank you for that clarification because I thought, did we, did we do something I didn't understand? And so the ones aren't denoted in Jeff Jones Square. I know that's picky, but.
Yeah, that's correct. Those are going to be in the downtown supply and. They didn't consider that particularly a lot because we have the two, we have the two charging stations and I think one extra spot there. Not a full lot, so those weren't specifically included.
Okay, thank you.
So the, this is the on-street, on-street occupancy rates for which, for the waterfront area, which again is primarily focused there on Dock Street. You can see that, that during the midweek, you can kind of make out the midweek in the background there. It, it has a slow taper up to the evening time period where, when it shoots up to ninety-five percent and then tapers off again around five o'clock PM. But during the weekend, it jumps right up to a hundred percent at ten AM and kind of hovers there up until five PM. You're going to see a similar trend in the off-street supply of the waterfront as well. So again, very similar here for the, for the off-street. And where, although it's a little bit more typical of a, of a profile here, where you have right around the midday, you have some peak time periods. But they're right there at noon, it's about ninety-seven percent and it drops. Down to about ninety-five and then back up to ninety-six before it starts to taper off around three PM. During the midweek, it doesn't quite get that high, but it sits at about seventy-three percent there at about three o'clock. So Wendy, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to turn this back over to you. You want me to run through some of these key findings here?
I'll give you a little break and then you can chime in. So I think this goes back to what I originally said is. Boy, maybe you do have a parking problem down here and in part of that was just lack of surface parking, which I think is kudos to a town. Where you don't have a lot of surface parking, which can detract. But what we found is the on-street parking supply, it cannot fully absorb the peak summer demand if we lose some public lots. And then we also have to think about increased growth and redevelopment. So if we suddenly start losing some of these public lots. On-street is going to fill up in the downtown core and it's going to push out into the residential areas, which will cause circulation and some conflicts likely. The waterfront additional parking needs warranted, it exceeds the rates. And we also have to think about those trucks with trailers pulling boats and RVs. There's just a lack of parking for them as well. And so our next steps, I mean, that's really a, really a high level summary, but I think that's, that's kind of the core of what we're seeing is happening. We know those ITD lots are going to be coming offline in the next five years or so. We know those ITD lots are going to be coming offline in the next five years or so. So as next steps, we recommended a parking management plan. And that really takes a look at, okay, here's our base. What happens? Let's project out. Let's look at the land use plan. Let's look at other redevelopment activities. Let's see where we're at and where that effective supply really crashes. And then implement some parking management strategies and policies. In this plan, we have some really high level ones, just to kind of get the juices flowing, but really have to tailor those to what's happening in Sandpoint specifically. And then assess the additional parking options. What what are your choices out there?
I think Wendy, the only thing I might add to to this the next steps part is that maybe unlike the data collection and analysis piece, it's it's a much more, it's typically a much more engaged process. Where where we have folks, we typically work with folks from the city. We might work with some sort of a stakeholder advisory committee or or others to develop and evaluate and and sort of prioritize the different strategies that we're we're considering. And we like to take, take quite a bit more input during that phase because obviously it's it's not just a pure data collection analysis type of type of exercise. It's more of a what's going to work best in Sandpoint and what what are people going to both want to get behind and support as well as put up with once it gets put in place.
I think it's not any surprise to anyone in the in the room that people are passionate about parking and like to park near to their destinations. I know too, one of the things that we talked a lot with Jennifer about is, you know, what does the ADA parking look like? And so we noted that the ADA parking throughout the city exceeds the state standards. However, in just kind of some visual observations, we noted a lot of those spaces may not be compliant with actual ADA standards. To really verify that and understand what's happening out there is a is a pretty in-depth and detailed assessment, you know, are the slopes right? Do they have ramps? Is there enough room? Do they meet the minimum ADA stalls? But I think just anecdotally, we can say, I can say, for example, the waterfront lot, I looked at an ADA stall that was kind of just in a gravel area and you opened it up to a log boundary. And so it didn't really function. And so, you know, some of the strategies would be to take a look at those. But in terms of where ADA stalls and loading zones need to be, that's really kind of taking a look at adjacent businesses. How are, how is that street space and the adjacent land uses getting used to figure out exactly where those should go? So just some initial high level management plans and policies. What you see with most towns, I kind of referenced White Horse, Kalispell, Sun Valley. They started with a parking management plan and some strategies to really optimize that supply before they went straight to building something new. Um or sometimes they did it in conjunction. So really increase driver awareness of parking options. Is there good wayfinding? Are there the giant P's that help direct people to parking? Especially looking at, are we directing RVs and boats and trailers to the right areas? Always increasing travel options, making your community as bikeable and walkable and transit friendly as possible. You're well, well on your way there, but just being cogn- cognizant of that and continuing that effort. Managing the existing parking supply. That's really kind of looking at your whole permit system. It's kind of all of these things there, but you know, do, are there enough two hour spaces, enough three hour spaces? Are they in the right places? Always enhancing enforcement, that's a that's always helpful. Maybe it's just during the peak summer hours where there's a little more assertive enforcement in that downtown core area. Maybe it's more automated enforcement using technology. Managing the permit program, taking a look at residential permits. Do we need employee permits? Are there different ways to do that? Paid parking program, you have a lot of free lots. I'm not advocating one way or another. As Matt said, this takes a lot of stakeholder input. It takes a lot of understanding from local businesses, tourism and the people that live there. I think the challenge in Sandpoint, when you're a resort and recreational community is whatever we do as parking management, it's got to fit the local residents. And you know, those off peak hours when people want to come down and grab a burger versus that influx of tourism. So we have to be really cognizant of taking care of the residents as well as accommodating the recreationalist and tourism folks. And then again, a new parking supply. And where should that be and what does that look like?
Yes, I didn't, Jennifer, this may be a question for you. It was a lot of reading, so maybe I missed this piece, but Wendy mentioned trailer parking, et cetera, and so on. And I'm assuming that when the waterfront parking was looked at, that the master plan for City Beach with the new trailer parking was also kind of incorporated into this, but I don't remember reading that. So.
Uh, that was addressed in the Parks Concept for City Beach. I think again, with the next step on this parking study and the development of a parking management food forecasting actually what the need is. So the concept for City Beach, there was a what we could provide knowing there were parking issues, but forecasted demand was not actually part of that.
So we didn't, that's not actually included in here because I didn't remember reading about that piece, but as we move forward, then we are, we know we actually were planning on moving that direction. So, yeah.
Okay, one of the discussions that we had happened RV and and trailer parking is obviously we get that down at the beach for recreational use, but we also get people who are coming downtown, maybe at the beach or maybe traveling through or coming downtown during the day and then staying somewhere to park or elsewhere. So we get RV and truck and trailer parking. Some competing for that on street parking space, which uh is limited and difficult to find because they're needing the two lots and obviously our forty five degree angle lots, the spots won't work for them. And so where we see that traffic migrate right now is to those ITD lots. And just for clarification on that reference with those going away and a reminder, we've talked about it previous council meetings. So ITD has a plan. It was the it is for improvements along the Highway Two corridor. And it is included in our multimodal transportation plan. It's the couplet. And so they have allowed the city to use what are the ITD lots there on Fifth Avenue, but those lots are property acquisition for a realignment of Highway Two to deal with the excess traffic. So um that is the discussion about those lots going away as there is a plan that ITD will be redeveloping and they're starting with some improvements on Highway Two uh in this next year. So we expect to see that on their transportation plans. The next five to ten years out would probably be long term.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So I had a citizen ask me today and and I was busy, so I didn't get an opportunity to answer the question, but the question was what might this mean for downtown workers who need someplace to park their vehicles, preferably for free and extended hours? Like getting rid of the ITD lots? I mean, are employees going to employers or employees going to have to buy permits now to park or?
Well, we haven't moved on to that second phase of the parking management plan. So I think that would be fleshed out through the plan, but what we do know from this first phase and and the data is certainly the demand for the lot parking is high. I think it's seen as closer proximity to the stores, the restaurants in Farmer's Market, the events and things in in downtown. And when we lose the ITD lot as Wendy and Matt have lots have presented, we do not have the on street parking to be able to meet that demand that will be pushed onto the streets. So a plan for the city parking lot is something that we have in process and actually you have upcoming agenda item on that as well. So.
Okay. And can we get the RVs not to park in the downtown downtown spaces?
So when we, yeah, when we talked about parking supply, I think it is, it's two, it's, there's a couple of different factors going into that is employee parking because they are utilizing a lot of the city lot now and the ITD lots. So that doesn't free as much visitor or locals coming down and be able to use those lots to access local businesses. And then also an increased need for really looking at the RVs and the trailers. Will the waterfront parking be sufficient? Once that's redeveloped? Or do we need to maybe look at some lots that are further outside of downtown, not, you know, significantly that could be a place for them to park and take advantage of the shuttle to the downtown transit to get them where they need to go. So I think there's a couple of different aspects we need to look at when we're talking about new parking supplies.
Is there more to your presentation or is that?
There was just one more, one more, sorry. I was sure if you had more questions. So finally, we just want to talk a little about new parking supply considerations and just, you know, just kind of what we would go through if we did this. So really right sizing, I talked a little bit about that, you know, what? What's your target utilization? Do you want it fifty percent full? You know, how do, how do you get the size correct? The vehicle types? The cost, considering the construction, the operations and maintenance, the offsite impacts where you locate that can really have an impact on the existing network. For both just your traffic flow on your streets and for people walking and biking. So being really thoughtful that you're not suddenly creating congestion in areas that you don't want it. And then the fee structure, this goes back to, are you gonna, what are you going to charge? Are you going to charge for employees? You're going to charge for short term? Is it going to be a seasonal demand? And then we just kind of for planning purposes, threw this up here for most parking garage and even park surface parking lots. You plan about three hundred to three hundred and fifty square feet per stall. And the cost per space can range anywhere from twenty five thousand to forty five thousand per stall. And I thought it was just interesting to share really quickly is Kalispell is actually has on their docket right now a new parking mixed use development where they're going to build two hundred and forty parking stalls with commercial and residential above it. So other communities are also kind of looking at this this approach.
Wendy, I have a question for you. That three hundred to three hundred and fifty square feet per stall and then the twenty five to forty five K. Is that including, you know, drivelines and ramps and all that?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's not just your parking stall. That's kind of if you're doing your, you know, how much space do I need? That's kind of your, you know, order of magnitude planning level number, and that includes your drive aisles, turning, getting in and out, your actual stall. It even includes like if it's a surface lot, a little bit of landscaping area, places to walk. So it's your general number to start with.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions?
Well, relative to that piece there, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Lots of big pickup trucks in Sandpoint. So
Yes.
I just think basically in my head, doesn't work for parking structures more times than not. So um although I do believe there's a pretty nice parking structure that was integrated very well into Whitefish community. And it seems like you can actually park big trucks in there. So can you speak to that a little bit? Because that's just one of my concerns.
So um I came from Anchorage, Alaska. Hi, Maeve. I know we've been in meetings together. And we also had a lot of very big vehicles. So the three hundred and fifty per stall works pretty well. Where parking garages tend to struggle is the turning radii with trucks and the heights. So those are two considerations you really have to pay attention to, but the actual stall sites, stall stall size and planning number of three hundred and fifty square feet still works pretty well.
Nice question, Mr. Mayor. Wendy, you mentioned the new parking structure in Kalispell. Two hundred, just for point of reference, like two hundred new parking stalls with commercial and residential above. How, how tall is that building? How many floors of parking does that include?
Oh, boy.
Block, is that less than a city block? I mean, how, just for scale reference, I'm trying to picture.
Yeah, so um I want to say it was five stories, but don't, I'm not, I'll have to check the, I didn't put how many levels, but it was six hundred, six thousand two hundred square feet of commercial use. Seventy eight residential units on the upper floors. And their estimate was at about thirty eight thousand per stall. So right in the middle of that number I provided. And I can send more information on that over to Jennifer.
How how did that work? Are those public parking spaces? Once that structure is built or are they managed by the developer that built the residences and commercial above?
So what they're working through with their council right now is to do tax increment finance funds. And so it would be built by the developer, but leased back to the city. We might want to address a public private partnership structures under the next agenda item because that's what that's about. And there's actually numerous examples. Whitefish is another, multiple in Boise, multiple in in Twin Falls and Phil Cushland's on actually for the next agenda item and he's working with us on that project. It's a very common approach. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Matt and Wendy. Appreciate that presentation. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Was there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Mr. Mayor? If there isn't anybody. Okay, um just one more actually compliment for Jennifer. Wow, data. Because when we first started to look at parking and many, many years ago, being on council, I'm sure that former Councilman Eddie and former Councilman Aiken would just be reveling in we could actually make decisions based upon really good data about having a parking problem or not. So thank you for the effort here.
Thank you.
Okay, the final item under all business this evening is a proposed ordinance enacting amendments to city code sections pertaining to snow removal and parking regulations. And now you have the floor at the Infrastructure Development Services Manager, Amanda Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. I also have Chief Kuhn with us this evening to assist with any questions, but I'm going to go ahead and lead us through a brief presentation. We're requesting your consideration this evening for an approval of an ordinance to provide revisions to city code title six, which is traffic regulations, as well as title seven, which is specific to public right of way and property. As you'll recall, in alignment with our strategic initiative to provide responsive government services, we recently surveyed the community to assist in identifying opportunities for improvements to our snow removal services. As a result of that effort, we moved forward with a public workshop on October tenth and discussed some of those preliminary survey results as well as concerns and suggestions. And then moving forward, we looked at a two-pronged approach, one being policy and the other being city code. The policy was recently adopted on November second. The policy's purpose and focus is around expectations of city services. As where what we're discussing this evening are expectations around residents and regulations for things related to parking, snow removal on vehicles, when you have to shovel your sidewalk, et cetera. And so as a result, I have taken the ordinance that was in your packet and overly simplified it. I'll share my screen here. So the screen in front of you is summarizing the primary revisions. One element that was administrative component to the proposed changes is removing the requirements of residents from the previous policy into code. So that if you're a resident, you have one place to look versus two places for what applies to you. So we moved the requirement for no parking on the odd side of the street from policy into code. That is not new. That's been in place since two thousand and eighteen. What is new in the proposed ordinance is instead of that being effective from November first, it's now, should you pass this ordinance, would be effective from December first through March first. The reason for that was really to help with clarity and compliance. So make the dates more meaningful by the peak part of our season. Additionally, there would be no parking on either side of an emergency route as posted. I want to emphasize as posted. The emergency routes were incorporated into the policy that you recently adopted. And at this time, we do not have any emergency routes posted as no parking on both sides, nor do we intend to do so this season. So any of those changes would be forthcoming in the next season, just to make sure residents have plenty of time to be aware of these changes. And it will also buy us some time this year to really take a close look on those routes and make sure that we're putting those restrictions in place. And it will also buy us some time this year to really take a close look on those routes and make sure that we're putting those restrictions in place where they provide the most value. Additionally, we would incorporate the prior rule for removing snow from your vehicles that are located on the street within 24 hours. That's around safety. It becomes really difficult from a visibility perspective to see those buried vehicles that would be parked on the even side. And then a new restriction that is applicable all year would be no parking within a cul-de-sac. That's primarily rated, related to our ability to provide service as well as the fire code. So our cul-de-sacs are designed, as we've previously discussed at the November 2nd meeting, to accommodate fire apparatus. And again, to emphasize as posted, we would not be enforcing any no parking within a cul-de-sac this season. We would be moving forward with that in the coming year. And then last but most certainly not least, the revisions to Title VII that are proposed in the ordinance include revising that residents would need to remove snow from their sidewalks within 24 hours of two inches of accumulation of snow versus the current requirement that says it needs to be done by 9:00 AM. It also provides residents with some clarity on how wide that pathway needs to be in the winter season, which is 36 inches. And then it clarifies that residents are responsible for removing snow in front of hydrants adjacent to their properties as well as from ADA curb ramps. And with that, I would open it up for any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of things. One, thank you very much for doing this. This was like big for me for a lot of different reasons. And I, I think that a big thank you needs to go out to staff and the citizens and the crews for putting in and trying to get the best, most accurate information for this new upcoming season. So first is a thank you. Second would be to invite Chief up if there's any two cents that he would like to add to this to make sure that his crows have adequate resources to be able to educate, to educate our citizenry before enforcement in the season. And then three, and this is more of just a question like, what are we gonna do with our snow this year now that ground has been broken in that Milltown area where we've often seen our snow piled up? Where is it gonna go this year? So those three things.
Great question. Maybe I'll start so I can buy Chief some time to come up.
We just want to see him in that suit.
Right.
Yeah.
Regarding the snow storage, we recently executed an agreement to store the snow directly behind Super 1. So as you'll recall, the development is actually north of Chestnut. So there is still that lot between Super 1 and the new development. The property owners of that lot have graciously allowed us to store the snow at that location this season. I can't guarantee it'll be that way going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, or not a question, but a statement. And so a lot of this was derived by citizen input, right? Like some of the be stricter with the, you know, give the tickets, not the warnings. So just so the public knows that, that this is based on, it isn't the city police being, you know, mean. But also the citizens going, hey, don't just give warnings. You need to get out there and you need to cite these people for parking, you know, not moving their cars. So I, I really want to reiterate that this information, a lot of it came, was based on citizen input. So citizens can be mad at one another, but don't blame the city because we're doing, you know, as, as Council Monroe says about, you know, data. This is data that we brought in and listening to the citizens. So and I do like the signs. I think they're very catchy and hopefully people will notice them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And for what it is worth, we are releasing an update website that will have this information on it. And to the point of the community feedback and survey, you'll find a link that's referenced on this screen where citizens can go through and read all 300 plus pages of that feedback that does support your statement that this is really based upon that need to look for enforcement opportunities. Thank you.
So if, just to help clarify, so the question was with the crows and that ability to educate the public. So this has been heavily debated between a man and myself on have we educated, have we got the information out there enough to, to the citizens so they have an expectation of what's gonna happen this season? I love the input that we got from council and from our citizens about the new signs. So those new signs that'll go up to talk about which side of the street are parked, that they're gonna park on is, I think is, is wonderful because that gives us the ability from our crow's perspective to point at and look at and say, look, here's the signage. It's very clearly marked and posted. So that's, that's gonna be a huge help this year. We've, having some of that ability to educate this year and enforce some of that stuff next year is gonna be huge because that'll give us some time to help educate and alert the public that some of the major changes that are coming forward. Now, we've, flyers, those got, those got mailed. Should have whispered ahead of times that mailer should have went out and should be arriving in people's mailboxes. This, if they haven't arrived yet, they should be arriving probably this week. So all those things that are, that are happening is gonna help educate that public, which will hopefully lessen some of that stress for the crows as they enforce it. But it'll, it'll still be there as we adjust to some more stricter enforcement as a councilman already brought up. So hopefully that answered.
It did. So I love those guys and they have a very tough job and our citizenry in varying degree deals with challenges differently. I just want to make sure that they are, are as supported as, as possible. And I am really appreciative of you saying like, hey, you guys, you, this is what you asked for. So.
But we do listen to the citizens.
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an interesting year with the with snow. Snow's gonna come, enforcement's gonna happen. The, just to be blunt, people are gonna complain. They already do. We've been out tagging cars and boats and trailers, trying to get them off the street in prep for story removal. They're already upset with the fact that we've done that. Why we, why we haven't waited for the snow to come isn't always how it works. So that's just part of the, part of the job.
Worked out great for me.
Well, good. That's all that matters.
Right.
Counselor?
Mr. Mayor. Um, so this just came to mind and, and I don't know, Corey, you should probably stay. It, it's more of just a thought and a comment as we're educating the public about the newer parking policies and we're thinking about safety and such issues like that. It comes to mind to me, especially within the cul-de-sacs, that sometimes small children are building caves inside of the mounds. And as we're sending out our snow policies, I was hoping maybe I would bring up the topic of, maybe we can insert some safety reminders of that. Them also tunneling into the berms right on the street. I don't want to take any of the fun away from them, but I also do know that there have been instances where those, especially the louder mounds and the cul-de-sacs have collapsed and there's been fatalities and I just would hate to see that happen in Sandpoint. So maybe we can just send a happy reminder of, you know, build the igloo in the yard, not necessarily in the berm, move the snow around, make the roof really thin and have a great fun winter.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho amending Sandpoint City Code Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 4, Parking Regulations, Amending Sandpoint City Code Title VII, Chapter 2, Section 3, Removal of Snow and Ice, Providing for Repeal and Separability and Providing for Publication in an Effective Date. I would entertain a motion to, that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. Is there a motion?
So moved, sergeant.
They moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Grob? Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The motion passed in this ordinance, number 1398, that had read past and adopted under suspension of the rules. First item under new business this evening is a discussion with Festival of Sandpoint regarding some changes they're requesting to their lease at Memorial Field for next year's concert series. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are not requesting a council decision tonight, just some feedback correction for our staff as we are working with Festival of Sandpoint on processing their special event permit for next year. And ultimately, because there are unique circumstances with this particular event, it does come back before council for, with a lease agreement. In their special event application for next year, and festival has, Festival at Sandpoint has requested a couple of considerations for that lease agreement. We have had for several years, actually, since we rebuilt War Memorial Field and put in the new Cotton Barlow stadiums there. The occupancy number for festival was increased to a maximum of 4,000 people. They are requesting consideration for an increased occupancy of 4,500 people. And the second change that, significant change that they have requested is the ability to add one additional concert date. The reason we wanted to bring this before council tonight and put it on the council agenda for discussion was to give an opportunity for Paul with Festival to address this with council and answer any questions, but also got on a public agenda so the public is aware that these changes are being requested and has an opportunity both at the discussion tonight to know that is on the agenda and if council gives direction to staff to incorporate this, consider incorporating this into the lease and the impacts. There will be an opportunity when the lease comes back as well. So it does impact parking in the neighborhood. And then we have other impacts that I do want to let council know that we have not fully worked through internally. We wanted to again have some discussion tonight and as we move forward with the lease and development of that, and if it's council direction to staff that yes, you want to see a lease come back with an increased occupancy number for you to consider. And if you are willing to consider and want us to bring back the lease agreement with the potential of another concert date, we will look at those impacts internally as well. It does impact numbers for us for public safety numbers staffing with police and things. And we haven't done the deep dive yet. But if council has any preliminary questions about that, obviously Chief Kuhn's here for that as well. So Paul, I'm gonna hand it over to you to make your pitch first and then we can have a discussion.
Thank you so much. Mayor, counselors, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm Paul Gunter. I'm the Education and Production Manager with the Festival at Sandpoint. And as Jennifer kind of went through, we've got three changes we're asking for our lease for our 2023 concert season. The one at the top of my list is a brief one, our lease right now states that we can start our shows as early as 1:00 PM. Due to heat on the turf at our family show this last year especially, it was brutally hot at 1:00 PM. So we're requesting to move that back to noon if possible. Mostly just due to temperature. We're trying to keep that show in the middle of the day for families and go around lunch and nap schedules and all of those things. And of all of our planning, temperature is the one thing that we weren't quite ready for there and that jumped up and bit us a little bit. Our flexibility of concert days, Jennifer spoke to a little bit, right now are, our lease states that we have eight days that we can hold shows with special approval by the mayor to add one day for special occasions. Looking to increase that up to nine with the additional costs at Memorial Field with the artificial turf, the covering that we now rent yearly to put out all the machinery and labor, that averages about $150,000 for us to protect the turf at Memorial Field. Anything else that we can do to help cover those costs is huge for us and being able to have another show day, another headlining show day would be one of those things that would make that the easiest for us.
Paul, can I, can I ask about that? Do you have a specific day in mind? Or is it like a Wednesday or a, you know, Friday or?
Not necessarily. We'd be looking usually at those three dark days in between our Thursday to Sunday weekends each weekend. This past season, we had a Wednesday night show, the Kaleo show that we did, which was out of the ordinary. The only other Wednesday night thing we had done before was the Charlie Packard benefit several years ago. And that was, we were under 100 tickets left for that show, almost a sold out show. And it, our, our revenue was up specifically because of that show. Not just in ticket revenue, food revenue to our local restaurants, bar revenue, everything.
So likely Wednesday show.
More than likely a Wednesday. Not a lot of stuff comes through on a Monday or Tuesday. But we are in a weirder area for live music. So a lot of times we do get people that are routed through midweek on their way to play bigger venues on those Friday and Saturday shows.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Jennifer, how many complaints did the city receive about that Wednesday night show? Was there an outcry in the community about extending the, the concert series by one night this year?
We've extended it previous so that I don't know that the community really saw that extended night as an extended show. And in last year's lease agreement for clarification, we did not require, we did not include mayor approval for an additional show. We included the additional show because they knew they were going to have that. So in the past, it had been mayor approval, but there was that one. There's been Charlie Packard as mentioned in the past. So no, I don't know that we received specific complaints because of that additional one more. I don't know if that becomes a threshold or not. Our complaints and Chief can probably speak to this even more so than me, but I, and I know we've talked about this a lot. Our complaints tend to be driven a lot by who the artist is and why who the artist is, is because that then changes who the makeup of the attendees are. So Kaleo, I can't say that one on a Wednesday particularly increased numbers. If it was a different show and a different audience, that could be different. It really depends on the show.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's, I think that that's a really good observation as far as midweek, who it is, who's coming. So I, I want to advocate for that Charlie Packard memorial that that I was at both of those concerts. The Kaleo was totally fun. It was great. And that Charlie Packard one, it brought a tier for its sentiment and that local artist that, like that, it, it was fantastic. And so like, I'm here to put my two cents in that those Wednesday shows are amazing. And I, I do believe that festival season, our community is very aware that this, this is what is going to happen. So, you know, I, I appreciate you being here and advocating for those. And yeah, for sure, bro.
Okay, so item number three. Sorry. Capacity increase. Our capacity at Memorial Field has always been a self-imposed capacity. With the addition of the new grandstands, we worked with the city to bring that up. Adding the seats to the larger grandstand footprint allowed us to have more people. We had talked in our security planning two years ago now? Whenever that officially started, we have updated our security plan to a very robust document under the direction of Chief Kuhn on a lot of that, working with local security companies, a company out of Post Falls that was actually providing some of our security this year. A lot of other venues in the Pacific Northwest, a lot of other people at our size. And one other venue where people right up until last year were allowed to bring in their own food and drink and alcohol, just like the festival. And with our updates to security, our numbers are way up. We hired two additional security companies to provide professional security rather than just relying on our years of volunteer staff that got us through those lower level shows just fine. But booking some of these higher profile acts, anything at that national touring level just requires a different level of detail. And as Ally and I always say around the office, it's not something that we would come too lightly. We talked about in, increasing our capacity for a long time. And we really take pride in what we do at Memorial Field as far as security goes. We feel comfortable bringing our kids to these shows. And we want to keep that, that exact feel for everybody in the community. So we feel with our increases to security, our safety plan that is currently being updated again for this year. In addition to moving Festival Street out into Lakeview Park, that added about 13,500 square feet to the total footprint of the venue and insight on the actual turf that opened up about 9,600 square feet of additional space. By conservative estimates, it's about 384 bodies you could put in that space on the turf. And in the grandstands on our two sold out shows and our one almost sold out show last year, we were And in the grandstands on our two sold out shows and our one almost sold out show last year, we were averaging about 15 to 20% of available capacity. Still being open up there, which is anywhere from 225 to about 300 seats. So conservatively, we're estimating there's, I think that ended up being 609 available spots. Without packing any of the other areas that we already occupy with humans on Memorial Field.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you concerned about attendees' level of satisfaction if they show up and there's, they're literally in the top row of the bleachers back corner when they came with, I saw hundreds of people arrive with folding chairs. You know, half an hour before the gates opened last year, only to be relegated to the highest levels of the bleachers. You're just going to have hundreds more. Who are going to face that. So I'm saying, I mean, obviously I, I believe that you can fit that many people with Festival Street in the back. You're only, you got 20% of the seats empty on sold out shows at the bleachers. But how do we communicate that with guests like, hey, don't even bring your folding chairs. You're not going to get a spot on the line.
We are working on our communication for this year for people with that as well. That is one of our biggest challenges. Our whole venue is GA. Typically, almost any other venue in the world, you would have pit seating, some built in seating, cheap seats in the back. We have a single ticket price. People wait in the big line unless you're at the patron level or have a season pass and come through a different gate. Most of the action is in the GA line that all floods into the venue. We're working with our new marketing manager that we've recently hired to figure out the best way to educate the public on that. We've also implemented some other changes this year. There will be no reentry at Memorial Field. One of the biggest things that we see is people coming in early. They throw their blanket.
Yeah. I live a block from there. Why wouldn't I?
Go home and get all your stuff and come back in. That's one of the biggest things that slows down our line that increases the, the number of bodies that our security people have to put eyes on.
Actually, this year I just brought a bottle of gin and sat there when my wife came with the kids later.
You know, whatever works. In addition, we're, we'll, there'll be no more hard sided coolers. No rolling coolers, no strollers, no wagons. Trying to remove some of the bigger obstacles. We've been lucky enough that we've only ever had to evacuate for weather purposes at Memorial Field. However, when you have hundreds, potentially thousands of coolers and strollers and other things. Not only the aspect of trying to secure those on the way into the venue is a nightmare. Digging through to the bottom layer of ice is tedious and people don't, you know, they don't want you touching their caviar. I get it. I wouldn't want somebody's hands in my cooler, but it also removing those physical barriers from the field.
I just have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I really like Festival Street being in the back.
I
I really do. I thought I wasn't going to.
Kim first brought up the idea. I told him he was crazy and I absolutely love it.
Well, because when you sit, if you happen to sit over on that side that where Festival Street used to be, it's noisy and people are standing there. So you don't get to hear the concert. And I still think that even up in the top of the bleachers, it's still a great concert. It's anywhere you sit.
It's still not that far away. Yeah.
Right, right.
Top of the bleachers, you're only about 200 feet away and it's.
Well, and I guess the people who, you know, come half hour before and bring their folding chairs, I guess the comment is you're not from around here, are you? Right? Because we all know locals, it's like, get there early.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Get there early.
Place to sit. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So this might be a question for Cory. You just spoke to safety and so capacity wise, is that going to be a fire issue or a police issue? Does that space adequately? I mean, I know we have like in this room, we can only have so many people. So has that been looked at in detail?
Fire chief ran away. Clearly point that out first. With outside venues, what we've been told historically from our fire department is there isn't a max capacity for those events. So we look at it more from like what we feel comfortable with in a safety perspective. So adding 500 people to that venue. I don't, as long as we start doing some of these, like the steps he's taken, like taking out some of the trip hazards. We removed the bike racks last year from being dividers, some of those things that allow people easy access to hit those main gates. It should be fine.
We do, however, we do have occupancy limits at the, at the grandstands. And so, again, we wanted to get this before council, the public to recognize that this is being discussed, being considered and some direction before we start doing our deep dives. We have not had the internal conversation with staff as to how to manage that. So is there, do we have some requirement for what can be in the grandstands or what have you? We're going to have to have some of those conversations because there are occupancy limits in the grandstands. According to fire code, building code, it's about safety. So as we're adding more people, where people can go. No, there isn't a limitation from a fire perspective on the field, but yes, there is a limitation from fire and building code perspective in the grandstands.
Okay. And then second question would be, it's probably going to be the same answer. Parking impacts of 500 more that, you know, maybe that's 250 more cars. Is the high school lot going to accommodate that? Where are we thinking those people are going to end up? So will that be another detail that would be sort of vetted or?
Yes. So we have had the requirement, I think for about the last four years about the shuttle service with SPOT in using the high school parking lot. We'll have to kind of have a conversation regarding how full that is. We have some other details that we provide all of the supplies in our restrooms. And things for when games are over at Memorial Field, you're adding 500 more people over at Memorial Field. That's coming out of our parks budget. And yes, there's the $2 per ticket, but that actually goes towards the capital structures. It doesn't go to our operations budget. So when we're adding more people, there are things in our budget where our costs actually are going up and at the $2 for a ticket, it isn't actually offsetting some of those costs. So we have to have some conversations on that and start to look at our numbers. And again, to what does that mean for staffing with police? Do we start triggering overtime? We've got to look through some of those things too. And at this point, we haven't done that yet.
Okay. And then we talk about the neighborhood impact. I guess that with 500 more people would flow over into the parking piece of that. So I don't really know what my question is there to be honest, but I know they're impacted a lot. It's the same two weeks. I don't know if 500 would make that much of a difference or not. It might just sort of overflow further out. So.
I think some of that too ties into the, as was mentioned before, the type of show and the type of crowd we've noticed. When we have higher local ticket sales, our shuttle is utilized more because more people know about it, obviously. But parking at Memorial Field is is and will always be one of the biggest issues for us. We worked with SPOT again last year and on our biggest nights, we were at about 70% capacity at the high school for parking in the main lot, not utilizing the furthest, furthest south lot at that point yet, which has I've looked at the number a thousand times and now I don't remember how many spots. I think it's an additional 79 or 76 spots in that lot.
I'm going to guess you're right. I was just there today.
That, that weren't in that initial number. So there's still capacity at Sandpoint High School. And probably other spots if we need to run another shuttle somewhere.
Well, I can tell it's a big show when they're down, they're parking down and on my street on St. Clair. It's like, oh, must be a big show tonight. If they make it down that far and they're.
It's a long walk, guys. In a backpack.
That's right. No cooler.
Not this time.
It'd be hard without the rollers.
Right. How am I going to carry all that? Never mind.
I know. In the the near future, the nearer future than the Festival will be ready for and the Sandpoint concert going population is, will be ready for there. There will be other major security changes happening. Just it's the way of live concert venues these days, unfortunately, but.
I really appreciate you bringing that up. So like, one of the things, like we're all grown up, we're all maturing, things. Through a really interesting past two years that has revealed some things, some opportunities for us to do better. Hearing you say that you, that the festival is more and more aware of the concerts in which they choose and the impact that there, that those concerts are having on those neighborhoods in our community at large. It, it, I want to give the festival its best fighting chance to knowing that we in some of this body have increased your costs. Like we have directly impacted you. I also want to give you the best fighting chance for you to recoup some of those costs as well as you understanding that we have resources over time. We, you know, we, we want everyone in our community to include the concert goers to have the best, safest experience possible. So moving forward, I don't know what staff needs to hear from this body, but like the, I don't think that you've made unreasonable requests. And I think that we have a capable and competent staff to include administrative and law enforcement. Come back to us with really good information in a, a direction to go.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So seems like staff has some general direction going forward. Okay. Last moment for comments on that, council. No? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Madam Clerk? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. The final item on the agenda this evening is a proposed resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency to manage redevelopment of the city parking lot. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be quick and leave it if there are a lot of questions. What is before you is a memorandum between the City of Sandpoint and Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency to form a feasibility steering committee and work together to look at the potential for redevelopment of the city parking lot for multi-use public-private partnership. And Councillor Welker referenced this being done in, in some other communities. It is a growing trend. So one of the opportunities when a city and with urban renewal in particular in Idaho, when a city owns the property like we do with the parking lot. With, when it is in an urban renewal district, we have an urban renewal agency, there is an opportunity to transfer that property over to the Urban Renewal Agency who through an RFQ process developed in coordination with the city could seek a private development partner that builds something that the city wants, that's highest and best use that in order to build it on that space, they have to build in the required public parking. And there's different models for how that works. One model is that they build the space and and the parking space and they would lease back a certain number of parking spaces to the local government. The more common approach that is used in Idaho is that a private developer would build space on the lot, but in the essence, the space would be condoized. For, so for example, ground floor parking could be condoized. It's city owned, ground floor parking. Second floor in a parking structure, city owned, would be city controlled, city owned parking in this condoized development. Third floor might be something different. Top floor might be something different and there can be some mix in between. So on the ground level, you might have retail mixed with parking. And higher levels, you might see multi-use with parking. An example of where this has been done recently. Pull this up. And this is why I suggested we wait for this item because we have that, this built in and Councillor Welker had some questions about over in Montana. This is a recent project actually down in Twin Falls where they did exactly this. There was a multi-use development. That's what you're seeing here, which included housing. And incorporated into this development, this was a smaller development, but there were 50 parking spaces for the city, which is what they required. And this was a, a lot that was owned by the city. And they went through the same process with their Urban Renewal Agency. Another example of where this has been done, much larger project, larger city. But over in Boise, if you've been down there, you might be familiar with the Hampton Inn, relatively new development down there. And what you're seeing here is again, public parking, municipal owned parking garage. And you're, then you're seeing that hotel incorporated into that. And if you've been there, the hotel on the second floor, which is adjacent to the, the parking garage, they've got like a deck area out there for, for their guests. And then you've got retail space that is built into this as well. So you can get really nice development, but it's a way to achieve that additional public parking through a public-private partnership that without taxpayers having to pay that additional cost to build in the parking, you figure out how you structure this into the public-private development. We have engaged Leland Consulting, who just previewed for your next council meeting. Chris Sahaas with Leland will be back here to present the final version of the report on the land use study and economic development and housing assessment that they completed for us. But we have engaged them on a second. A second engagement to be looking at the downtown lot and really be looking at feasibility, highest and best use. So that again, we have data, we're not guessing who wants to be there, what we might like to see there, what does the data say? There is a market demand for there. What's going to contribute to the economic vitality of downtown and address a lot of our priority issues in the community. So that would be done as part of the feasibility study and an assessment report that will come back to council as well as this joint steering committee. And ultimately council again, will have decision points in this process. It's not like with this MOU with SURA that they're operating independently. There will be a steering committee that will be mayoral appointed, that will include two members of SURA, three representatives from the city and then an additional community member with some knowledge and expertise to add to that to really work with Leland. Phil Kushlin is engaged with us on this project as well, was here today. And hopefully you don't have any questions for him because he just kept, he just caught his flight from Spokane down to Boise. So I sent him a message and said, I have the visuals we can pull up. And he said, I'm getting on my flight. So I'm sorry, you just have me here tonight. And Leland is prepared to come out. We're prepared to kick off the steering committee with council approval. The 7th of December and get this project going. It's been talked about for a very long time. It was in the original plan for urban renewal downtown. But it just is something that stalled out and not moved forward. And again, that's why moving forward that parking data, parking study starts to get us the information we need. We've got this other piece going. We've got the downtown waterfront competition and the parking garage area is included in that competition area. So we're aligning all of these things moving forward and really moving for towards within the downtown competition area, including this parking garage area. Think about it as like really developing a master plan for our downtown.
Excellent. Questions?
Jennifer, I have a quick question. Has there ever been, this might not be possible, but is there, has there been any consideration of looking at the US Bank lot and
Yes.
acquiring that or somehow incorporating that into this plan?
Yes, that ideally would be the hope, which would give us a full city block. And it could be incorporated that the bank then is built into the development. And certainly if you look at parking utilization at the bank, they have a lot that is mostly vacant most of the time. So yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Jason, you stole my steam. That was the question I was going to ask.
I've been wanting to ask that question for like three months now. So.
Okay, then you can have it.
Should we draw straws?
Any other questions? No? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for memorandum of understanding with Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So be real call vote.
Councillor Groh?
Yes.
Councillor Welker?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Sprow?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.